Like we were just seeing her.
I know.
Wait, wait, wait.
It's the.
You want to see?
Team, ready?
I'm running more listo.
Did you say yes?
I said, yes, listo.
Oh, your lista.
El lista.
That's what threw me off. Good morning, San Miguel County. It is 9:31 a.m. on Wednesday, August 20th. We are calling to order a regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Present in the room are all three commissioners and staff. We will begin with our moment of silence for grounding and gratitude. Thank you. One thing I am particularly grateful for today is our top leadership at the county. We had a retreat yesterday and I spent half of the retreat thinking how lucky we are to be working with Mike and Jared and Maura and the others. But you guys really provide so much experience and guidance and just everything we need. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We are grateful for you all.
Um, review of the agenda. Anybody have Jared?
I think that Maura may have had one thing we needed to move to an administrative item because we just have a clerical change.
Okay, what's that, Maura?
So item six H. If we could move that to administrative matters, there's just one amendment that needs to be made on the record before that's approved.
Sure. Would you like that as the first, second, or third item under administrative matters?
Would suggest we just take it first.
First.
Because it just. Because it just moves it one step in the agenda.
Thank you both. Anything else? Anybody? Are we all looking good?
Looking good to me.
Great. Um, we are now moving into public comment for items not on the agenda. Please limit comments to three minutes. If comments are not related to an item on, sorry, related to an item on the agenda, there will be no board response or action taken since the topic was not posted with proper notice and any comment could potentially violate the Colorado open meetings law. We have no members of the public in the room. I'm looking online to see. I don't see any hands raised, so we will carry on to the consent agenda. I was pleased to see these two revised deed restrictions. Are those the ones? No, I'm not. I'm wrong about that. Please to see, I guess, the um, moving forward with the deed restrictions on the lots that the school district is purchasing in Ilium Valley and releasing TSG from all of that. I ran into John Pendolfo yesterday and he told me that they had closed on those lots yesterday. So um, that is moving along. Anything else on the consent agenda, anybody?
A quick question probably from Mike on item six B. Yes, which was the title of the facility is easement. You know, for Front Street in Placerville.
Yes.
And Mike, I was just curious if you could tell us what that's going to change or open up.
Sure.
Sounds like good news.
It is good news. So Clear Networks received a B grant almost two years ago now. And as a part of their plan, they're looking to build a loop of fiber that goes down Valley from the current terminus at the sheriff's office all the way down Valley. They've worked with different subdivisions to get easements through their property. And this would end up going through Placerville and then eventually up over Iron Springs Mesa, tying back into their current facilities in Norwood, thus making a loop. So if there are fiber, fiber cuts in the future, they will be able to have switching in place to route internet traffic in both directions. We are asking them to size any conduit large enough so that it could accommodate a future additional ISP. So that there could be competition in the marketplace down the road, but there has not been other companies that have expressed interest. Just going back a little bit. We remember that the county worked for almost a decade to get this redundant fiber network using Tri-State and Sampa dark fiber leases. And at that time, there were three internet service providers that had expressed interest in competing in the marketplace. Ironically, they have all been acquired um, and by one company. So Clear Networks, Vero, and Brainstorm Forthought are all one company now. So um, I think it's good from a perspective of the strength of the company and the offerings that they're going to make, but unfortunately, it's not the level of competition that we had hoped for, which we know brings down costs overall. Knowing that many Down Valley residents have been on old CenturyLink or now Lumen uh, legacy internet systems and have very little other ability. Clear, um, Starlink, for instance, doesn't work in most areas of the Fall Creek subdivision. This is a, an extremely exciting prospect for them to be able to have fiber um, to the home and redundancy in, in much higher speeds. So we're providing, they're going to be going through overhead lines using Sampa. So um, however, at this location, they're going to go from that overhead line down underground, which is why we're providing them an easement rather than just an IRU for the ability to use that area.
Can I pose a follow-up question?
Please do.
You mentioned that this would be an exciting thing for Down Valley residents who've been on rickety internet. I think that they now have the opportunity to connect to the mainline. But I'm curious if that final connection, since it's the last mile or missing hundred feet, is something that each owner needs to accomplish? Or if that's something that is going to be offered by Clear Networks and is that final connection?
Yes, it will be happening. I know that Clear Networks is already engaged with residents in Sawpit and Fall Creek. Those are the two that I know of. I believe they'll be doing so in Placerville. Placerville, obviously a little bit greater challenge because they're going to need additional um, over, they're probably going to be using the overhead lines uh, through Sampa. But this, as I was talking, I convinced myself otherwise because really they're just using the overhead power pole attachments, so they will be able to provide direct service to each one. And they're not only the middle mile, but they are also the last mile or ISP provider.
That is such good news. Thank you.
Really good news.
Yeah.
Do we have a sense of timing when that might all happen?
They're still optimistic that they're going to be installing lines this fall. And you know, with the overhead stuff in particular, um, they can continue on beyond our digging deadline. It's only for the sections that they have to trench and vary conduit. That will be working with them to make sure that they can get those in before any deadline when the ground freezes.
Okay. I think we are ready, or I am anyway, for a motion on the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda with uh, the addendum of moving item H to under, uh, the first item under administrative matters.
Second.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye as well. The consent agenda is approved. Now on to administrative matters. The first one will be item H, approval of the chair's signature as the San Miguel County Housing Authority as a construction agreement from Diana and John Reens to develop the vacant one seventy-six Alexander Overlook in Telluride. And I believe that is in Lawson Hill. Pursue it to San Miguel County Land Use Code Sections five dash thirteen oh five B dot X I V dot and five dash thirteen oh six B. Is that a Maura thing?
Yeah. So I just wanted to address, so item um, or section six under the agreement has a expiration date for this agreement, uh, but it hasn't been filled in. And so I wanted to propose an amendment to the agreement as it is in the packet to, to impose an expiration date of one year from today, August twentieth, twenty twenty-six. Um, and I consulted with Kay, the planning director on this, and we think that's a reasonable date, given the project proposal, um, which is proposed to be done by the end of October twenty twenty-five, uh, because they will be putting in a prefab structure. Um, so we think that one-year date for expiration of this agreement is, is reasonable.
Okay, but you weren't able to connect with the Reens about that? I mean, it does sound reasonable, but I'm just wondering.
I wasn't. I just realized this wasn't filled in um, late yesterday. And I think, you know, if, if they did end up needing an extension, that's something that we could process at the time.
That, that's what I would imagine. Okay, that sounds good. Um, so you need a motion to approve the chair's signature um, on the document as presented, I'll just make this motion, I think, um, with the addition of a date in section six, did you say?
Yes.
Which um, provides an expiration date for the agreement of, please again, September, October?
August, August twenty, twenty twenty-six.
August twenty twenty-six. Okay, that was a little bit of a choppy uh, motion, but does it work? Are we okay with that?
Yes, your motion was clear. I would add a request to Maura that doesn't have to be part of the motion, but Maura, you could contact the Reens before we present them with this contract and just let them know what we did so that it's not a surprise at the moment of signature. I, I think I'd feel a little um, better about how we were handling this.
And I'll connect with Pam at SMRHA as well because she's been of the go-between here on this.
If Evan's able to make that call, that's fine too.
Yeah. And just if they're, let them know that if there's, if that doesn't work for some reason, we're open to discussion.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. Well, on that note, I'll second that motion.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. The chair will sign that document. Uh, okay, here we go now. Moving on to what was originally seven A, discussion of the CCAT priorities survey. And I did send that to you all, but I did not expect that you would necessarily have looked at it. Um, there are a number of matters that the CCAT staff is trying to prioritize um, in terms of where they spend their time in the next few months. And so wanted to um, get it feedback from each of the counties. Um, and so we will be talking these items through. I, um, there is some information in the survey itself, which I will just kind of read out loud. And then I do have some notes as well from when we went over most of these uh, items during the retreat two weeks ago. And I would definitely love to hear from staff on these as well, um, as the commissioners. Um, and then I will go ahead and fill out the survey. Actually, I can do it while we, while we chat through it. Okay. So is that clear kind of background? Everybody's good? Okay. So um, the first piece is about adjustments, adjustments to proposition one, two, three. And as you may recall, proposition one, two, three was passed by the voters. And I understand it's fairly common that once something becomes implemented, actually probably even if it's passed by the legislature, there, um, you know, people under, figure out kind of some things that could be adjusted to make it more um, easier to um, implement and you know, just kind of unforeseen consequences of the bill that need to get cleaned up. So um, there are a number of different um, sort of efforts to do this. And I think ultimately they will all come together in one kind of cleanup bill. The one that I thought was, um, well, there are a few that I thought were particularly interesting. One is that I mentioned this last week, that jurisdictions would be able to create regional partnerships that would help with kind of allocating the counting of, of um, new construction or new units that are required for compliance with proposition one, two, three funding. Um, there's also one in there about asking that preservation of affordable housing count towards goals. So not just that you keep a house deed restricted, but that you add a deed restriction or something like that. In particular, people were at CCAT were talking about um, a, a community that helped um, the owners buy a mobile home park um, and that that was preserving the affordable housing, that that should count. So there are a number of things like that. Um, and I guess the question is, do, does our county support CCAT engaging in this issue during this interim period? And then how high is the value do we consider to CCAT? So um, I'm open to comments.
Uh, I support this and I would rate it high. Four or five.
Okay.
I'd like to hear staff's comments before we.
Make a decision.
Make a final decision. Inconclusions with grain.
Uh, I would agree with your um, thoughts. And though we don't have a program similar to Indeed or Mountain Village's Yes program, I think it's a valuable tool when we look at the effectiveness of that program in Vail. Um, in a rising or thriving real estate market, there's not a lot of takers on that. But during the last great recession, they had a lot of folks participate in that. We also hear from a lot of our long-term residents that may be in free market properties, the cost burden, and this could be a way to provide them funds to live on, to pay their taxes, keep homes uh, kept up, and then eventually um, have that transition into being a deed restricted home in the future. So I really value that tool in the toolkit. And likewise, we've heard from Archuleta or some of our other counties that where they are kind of what we feel making a mistake um, of deed restricting a property only for a specific duration. We just saw this happening in Cottonwood Estates in Norwood. When that deed restriction goes off twenty-five, thirty, even fifty years into the future, we know that those homes are often skyrocketing in value and then uh, uh, being unattainable for future purchasers. So I think the idea of finding additional ways to keep, get homes deed restricted as well as keep homes that are currently restricted long-term makes a lot of sense.
Okay. Jared, anything to add or Maura?
No, I think this is really good kind of cleanup language. We know that Prop one, two, three was implemented, you know, relatively quickly. And this is kind of the expected outgrowth of now we've lived with it for a couple of years. We're figuring out how it does work and how it doesn't work. And these are kind of good suggestions to hopefully make it easier to manage as we keep moving.
Exactly. Okay, good. So I think we're all in agreement. Uh, the next one is, um, they're calling this Yes in God's Backyard. This is a um, continuation of a bill that failed last year. It was called Yes in God's Backyard because it was meant to expedite housing on land owned by religious organizations as well as schools. Um, and yeah, this, um, it failed. And I think one of the big concerns among those who voted against it and were not in support was that it gave preference to religious organizations, which might somehow limit who would actually use the housing. So it would have be sort of not, I don't want to say, they could potentially discriminate in their use of housing. I think that's one of the reasons it didn't go through.
Um, can I also add to that? Just I sat, sat in on one of those steering committee, committee.
Oh, good.
Meetings went before this.
Yes.
Um, and one of the concerns was also that um, various religious institutions can be for profit. And there was a concern there as well, that, that some people brought up that up as a concern. I don't know if that carried on, but I.
That makes a lot of sense.
Yes.
Um, so my understanding is that faith-based institutions will be entirely removed from this, even if they are educational organizations. So obviously it'll get renamed. Um, and when I looked through HB twenty-five dash eleven sixty-nine, which was the version from last year, basically it talked about allowing these developments to be approved with administrative approval as opposed to going through, you know, various steps. Um, and it also said that you can't disallow these projects because of density or height, as long as they aren't above three feet.
Three feet?
That's three stories.
Forty-five. That's, that's forty-five feet.
Three stories. Yeah, thank you. Anyway, um, I don't really think this is applicable in our area. I just, I, it's not really particularly of interest to me and I don't know. It might be actually more about fighting it than supporting it. I'm sorry, I don't know that. Anyway, have any reactions to this or any further understanding or thoughts of this? On this?
Not if we answer the question, does your county support? I say no.
Well, it's, it's not supporting the bill. It's supporting CCAT working on it. And I'm so sorry, I can't believe I don't know whether we, CCAT was opposed or or in support last year.
Um, they, that, they were in opposition of this.
Okay.
This, the voted on stance. Um, yeah, at, at least from the steering committees.
That's probably.
Meetings that I participated in.
To me.
That they were leaning towards opposing this.
Yeah.
Maybe I should move for no to abstain.
That's what I was thinking too.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, great. And then I'd like to get, okay, I'm not just, okay. Land use legislation. Okay, um. Okay, so this is something that, sorry, I haven't looked into very much. And maybe Jared or Mike has. The DOLA Strategic Growth Report, are you familiar with that?
I, I can't say I am in full. I know of the existence of the report and it, it's making kind of large level policy prescriptions.
Yes.
For statewide issues. Um, you know, for, for us, it's kind of been, it's an interesting read, but a lot of things don't necessarily apply or we're a very rare market when it comes down to a lot of these things. So it's, it's not been something that's been particularly useful for us.
For us. So my understanding is from the way it was presented or discussed at CCAT is that they have concerns about that report, that it will be used to develop um, state regulations on land use that would trickle down to us. And so again, I think that there, there, this was something that the counties would probably oppose. Um, I, yeah, even without understanding, yes, please, Jared.
If, if, if I may, I, I do agree that it's these, these reports. these, these reports end up like leading into legislation because they, they do make some policy prescriptions, some like, hey, this seems to work here or here or here, which is great, if it's functional for each local government. Our problem is, again, we have such a rare market, we don't have a lot of buildable space. So the, the only way that I would, you know, as a county, I think our posture would be if there's an exception to these new rules that we are accepted, it's really no harm, no foul for us.
Right.
But I do see like the broader county focus of, you know, do we just want to object to this based on the principle of it's likely going to lead to new rules that we'll just hope to be exempted for.
I, yeah, my gut tells me this is something that CCAT should pay attention to because it would be sort of like, you know, when we were involved with the solar regulations in the state, trying to say, here's how you're going to regulate solar. I don't think we want them doing that and I do agree with Jared, oftentimes because we're so small, we can get exempted from it, but I think in solidarity with the other counties and just a general principle of supporting local government as opposed to state prescriptions, I, I'm leaning towards saying we do want CCAT involved with this and it's quite important.
Yeah, I, I would agree and also based on the CCI meeting that I sat in on in regards to land use regulations that might be prescribed statewide for things like solar, wind, geothermal regulations. What I've gathered from that is that actually would be quite restrictive, especially in a county like San Miguel where we're already developing our own regulations. And so I think having CCAT's finger on this pulse would be important to see if that, there's any like crossover there.
I'd agree, do we want to issue a number four?
I was thinking this might, might be a five.
From what I've heard, I agree with that.
Okay, recreational tax authority. So this is a proposed by Clear Creek County and there, and it basically allows a county to levy, as it says, a recreational services tax, which he, George Marlin presented, described as being quite similar to a lodging tax, but on recreational services. Evidently, they, that's a big part of their economy, not surprisingly, in, in unincorporated Clear Creek County. So he feels very strongly about this. He got a lot of, I wouldn't say resistance, but lack of enthusiasm for CCAT supporting this, they just, the, the membership felt that it just wasn't a substantial enough revenue stream for us to kind of use bandwidth and political capital and so forth to, to work towards. There was a feeling that it would be better to, to promote an excise tax, we have much more flexibility and be more broadly applicable. That said, George made a very emotional appeal to the membership to support them. And then kind of left it at that. He has done so much work for CCAT, he was kind of playing that card. I have to say, as much as I really like George and appreciate his leadership on this and other matters, my feeling is that it's not something that is certainly relevant to us. Am I correct about that? As, or big relevance to us, significant relevance.
I, I would suggest it could be, right? I mean, we're, we're talking, I, I think in Georgia's case, they do talk a lot about rafting companies.
Right.
Right? And the rafting on Clear Creek, we do have some rafting agencies that do use the San Miguel. Particularly down in the lower reaches, potentially down around Dolores as well. But if it's constructed in a particular way, would it apply to sleigh rides? And would it apply to going out on snowmobiles and all of those kind of businesses, right? And so I think we could have a pretty significant nexus to this. But again, it's, it's, is this where we want? Again, I don't think that revenue is a really big revenue. Uh, it's not, it's not going to be a huge moneymaker. But it's, it's something that it would have application in our county. And we would, I, I just have never really penciled the numbers of how many, you know, rides and trips and those kind of things and, and we really don't have a good source of that within our region. And so it would be kind of a standing question of just as a policy matter, would the commissioners want to pursue that?
I, I might also suggest they're, they're on the precipice of starting their large Argo mine tourism where they're building their gondola to add an immense amount of recreation infrastructure.
This is Clear Creek County?
Clear Creek County. Um, like game changer for their entire county level. So I understand why it makes a lot more sense to them. When I think of whether or not we'd support this, I think of what's, what are the impact to county roads and services? Obviously, search and rescue, but a lot of these, these operators already provide their own medical and or emergency response. So I think for us, I would view it as a lower priority. But I could understand if I were in Georgia's shoes, I would be pushing for hard for this as well.
I feel this is territory of conflict of interest for me.
Yeah.
Considering my husband owns a guiding company in the county.
We have a significant number of guiding companies and outfitters in our community. And I, I think twofold, one is for the visitor or user of those services. It's already a fairly expensive venture. There, and so I don't want to price people out of thing would have experiences when they come to our mountain community. And on the same time, I, I don't see where our guide outfitters are taking advantage of the county or of the forests in our area, so I wouldn't want to further learn them.
Yeah, I, I can give you insights if you would like as to what that looks like as far as operating costs and paying the BLM and or Forest Service for, for permits and then the astronomical cost of insurance for running and up those kind of operating businesses. It's, it's a tough business to stay in financially, but it's just the costs are pretty, pretty high to just operate.
But those are needs to him.
That's fair. Yeah. Jared, did you want to say something else?
I was just going to suggest similar, you know, they've, they've got the option to actually think about it for future policy conversation, but not act on it today. I, I do think, you know, ultimately, the, the state of Colorado has been talking about taxing services in some way, shape or form for a decade or more. And this is one of those efforts to do so, so it's, it, I do think it's something that'll come back up. And understanding it better would be great for us, but I, I don't think we're kind of poised to make a call on this today.
And I, I believe a more broad stroke taxation of services would be in my eyes more fair than singling out the recreational entities.
Um, I actually, I kind of like what Jared said, not that, that they not, but you know, pursue it right now, but that we consider it in the future because I, I like what we just said about, you know, it's raw or one, does that sound okay? So we're not just, yeah, all right. And then I don't know quite what to do with. Okay, thank you. Waiting for my, the survey to advance. Okay. Alrighty, this has to do with the impact of the one big beautiful bill on SNAP and Medicaid and I'm trying to remember, yeah. Work with the Trishal Partners to address county impacts and federal changes. Yeah. I guess this is quite general, but there would be other organizations probably leading this, including CCI and CALFO and, or maybe the human services one, so I feel like this could be a yes, but maybe and with a moderate relevance, yeah.
I would, I would say we get session tomorrow, right? Legislative session starts tomorrow to discuss a lot, you know, again, how much deeper some of these holes are. So I, I don't think it's a bad idea to have them on the lookout, but I wholeheartedly agree that it's going to be CCI probably in the, you know, driver's seat of a lot of this along with the you know, uh, human services administrators organization who will be really taking the close look on this.
Okay, so I'm putting down a yes with a three, moderate importance, does that sound good?
Sure.
Yes. Oh, okay, this one, I will just say right out loud, I'm a fan of. This is going to be a new iteration of last year's attempt to fix the homeowner insurance issue, the costs. And yes, so this would be two different funds generated by fees that would focus on hail and wildfire, helping people to harden their homes as well as develop a reinsurance program. Reinsurance is when the state agrees to take on a certain amount of the liability in order to reduce the premiums that a homeowner pays. You know, we've seen so many homeowners or some homeowners' insurances policies canceled here as well as just, you know, doubling of rates. I think it's important that the state try to address this.
Do you know where the fees would be generated from?
That has not been clear yet. I think in last year's version, I did read it this morning.
It's a hundred dollars per inch, current insurance.
Are you, are you maybe thinking about what I said last week about health insurance or did you read it here? In this one?
Remembering last time.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And I think that's why I was not able to personally, was that I was concerned that that would be a tipping point. If a hundred dollars per annum.
It's actually, this is a, this is percentage, I'm looking at the last year. I think I did talk about that one last week, so I might have thrown you off. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, I'm, I'm reading through the last year's bill a little bit and it was a half a percent as amended on every policy. And you can exempt yourself if you do the home hardening efforts, have a corrugated steel roof, those kind of things. So there were ways out, but again, it did not end up succeeding because ultimately it increases the costs of policies in order to decrease the cost of policies. So it's this, it's this kind of odd slip, you know, it's, it's a very circular logic of you're going to increase fees to decrease fees. But what it does effectively is it increases fees on those who don't have those mitigation efforts. And there's an argument there that it's the folks who can't afford to make those mitigation efforts who end up paying and those who can afford, you know, actually get benefits and lower their insurance premium. So it's, it's, it's a really tough nugget to, to try and wrestle with, but.
I think that we, I would root are interested in some kind of insurance shuffle.
Yes.
Depending whether or not what Jared just described is what ends up being cooked up by the legislature that we certainly want to be involved and.
That's how I feel as well.
So.
Totally agree.
Go, yes.
With a five?
Four or five, sure.
Yes, give it a four. I think the insurance, the commissioner of insurance will have a lot to do with this and I think we need to be like the lead on this. Large county elections, I would suggest we just abstain from this, it's not relevant to us. Do you guys feel differently about that?
Agreed.
I absolutely.
Okay, and then ranked choice voting, I was sort of surprised this got brought up. They, are you, you all remember proposition one thirty-one that failed last year and the talk among people who are generally in support of ranked choice voting is that it failed because it had what's called a jungle primary or an open primary. And there's consideration of bringing it back where there would still be political party primaries. Anyway, I just don't really feel like this is a, is a county issue. I feel like it's a broader state issue and so I don't necessarily think that CCAT needs to be involved, but we're curious to know how you all feel. Jared, I can tell.
I mean, as a political scientist, I love the idea of ranked choice voting. It's, it's an interesting concept experiment, you know, it failed. Just, I think it was just too complicated. Ultimately, the, the lay voter looks at that question and is like, what are they actually trying to do here? And so it's, it's a lot of very inside baseball. The concept of being able to get your second choice versus, you know, your wholly opposed choices is an appealing one, right? But it's, it's one of those things that I don't know that we as a county are an advocate for or against this, you know? Again, my, my political science brain is like, sure, let's do it. But, you know, my practical brain and trying to help Michael Wazinski stay sane, I would probably go the other way, so.
I'm a big fan of ranked choice voting as well. I just don't know that this is something that CCAT needs to be involved with. I don't think it necessarily supports or undermines county governments, so that was my.
But yeah, I think that's a.
So is that the answer to no?
I would say a no and a one personally.
Yeah.
Okay. We're done. The other piece that was not on the agenda, but is related to sort of legislative matters is the idea of the health insurance affordability enterprise bill that will be addressed in this special session, which begins on Thursday and I had mentioned this last week as something that I am in support of supporting and you all have asked for some additional information, which I pulled together last night and so I'm sorry about that. But essentially, there is a health insurance affordability enterprise in Colorado. And that, that entity was used to provide reinsurance as well as to, and if someone knows more about this than me and can help, please do so. But provide reinsurance, again, like I explained, for the homeowner's insurance and also to just reduce premiums for, for local people. And it worked, like we had, you know, lots of uptake in terms of people buying individual insurance policies on the market, on the, what's it called, the the Connect for Health Colorado, which is our marketplace. The enhanced premium tax credits that helped fund that from the federal government have been eliminated by the big bad bill, otherwise known as House HR1. And so there's grave concern about people's premiums, people who are buying them on the marketplace doubling and expect, expectation that many people will just no longer purchase that. So this inter, this bill is kind of a stopgap to kind of stabilize this health insurance market. There are no like direct costs in terms of fees or taxes to any of us. It would basically be borrowing from the unclaimed property trust fund, which is a fund of, I don't, of like bank accounts or something, is it? Jared, help me out here.
Yeah, the, the way that fund works is any unclaimed property in any bank or bills, if you, if you overpaid your Excel bill or any sort of unclaimed cash value gets turned over to the state treasurer's office and the state treasurer holds that and anybody can actually go check. I think I helped Mike do it not too long ago. You can go on their website, the state treasurer's website, look your name up and see if you have unclaimed property that is being held by the state treasurer. And that fund ends up growing. A lot of people don't go check for these little, you know, dinks and dunks, sometimes it's a buck fifty that you forgot you had an account somewhere, sometimes it's a lot more. And ultimately, that fund has been shown to retain quite a bit of assets. You know, I think in recent conversation, it was, it was well into the multimillion dollars of assets. And so the state legislature is looking, it's one of the ways to kind of fill their budget gap that they have right now, borrowing from that fund by a certain amount. Making sure it can cover claims while also, you know, having an IOU from the general fund of the state government to pay those kind of. to pay those kind of things back, so.
Yes.
Jared, in the, um, unclaimed property fund, is there a kind of statute of limitations where after a certain number of years or certain number, certain amount of time, you're no longer able to reclaim your funds?
I am not aware of that. I've, I've claimed property from my grandpa. Um, and so I, it, it lasts for a significant amount of time. It just does not get drawn down. Uh, and is, you know, they, I'm sure they've got an actuary who are running some number and saying, we think you can take X without you know, having a, a run on claims or something like.
So, yeah, it's, it's saying, when I looked at that online, that some funds after five years are considered the unclaimed. I had no idea about this until Jared told me about it and was pleasantly surprised to find that I had a hundred fifty dollars where I had overpaid my medical bills. And they were, rather than they, them sending it to me, they sent it there. And I've since looked up for other family members and found almost every single person has unclaimed money sitting in the state treasury in different states. Uh, other states have this too. The kicker is when I told my brother about it and I showed him the amount that he had, he said, you know what? It seems too much like a scam. I don't believe that this is real. I said, I did it. It's real. And he said, you know what? I'm not going to take the risk. And so he's, he chose to just leave it there. And I think a lot of people are a lot like to be of the same mindset, so there is going to remain to be, whether it's through lack of information or lack of trust, funds there.
All right, well, we did went down that rabbit hole. Thank you. We all have an off season project. I call it fifty states or wherever you've lived. Uh, but anyway, the point being that this is the, uh, this is the interim source of funding to try to provide some relief for health insurance premiums. Um, and I imagine that since it doesn't say in this outline that I, that I shared last night, that, um, in the next session, they would figure out how they're going to pay that back. Um, but anyway, so this would provide, um, a little bit of a boost for our reinsurance program and then also for subsidies and try to provide some relief for insure, increased, um, insurance premiums. And I think I mentioned to you last week that the expectation is that statewide premiums will go up twenty-eight percent and rural premiums will go up forty percent. And then as I learned, um, that people buying on the individual marketplace would go up, would be doubling. So it's actually a pretty small fix, but I am such a supporter of people having health insurance that I feel like I would really like to encourage our legislators to, um, to make this bill happen, so. Uh, this is not part of the CCAT survey, but, um, I would like to write to uh, Representative Sukla and Senator Simpson about it. And if you all don't feel strongly or, or just don't agree with me, I could also do that individually, but just wondering how you feel.
I agree with you.
Okay.
Yeah, I think on its face, it's something we should
Support.
Support and, and I mean, I do have some more questions about the funding mechanism and what, what that would look like. My only concern would be furthering the, you know, put the state deficit and we're, it's, we're in such a tough situation right now that, you know, that diving into the minutia of this font's fund potentially and what that would look like, the implications of that, you know, I, I would be curious, but on its face, I think it's a good thing to pursue and.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you both or all for that helpful direction. I think we are ready now to move on. I guess what I'll do is then I'll, I'll write a, a note. It has to be pretty quick. Um, it'll probably be very brief and I'll send it to you all for your approval and, and then get it off to the, to Sukla and, and Cleve.
Great. Thank you for sharing all that info with us.
You're welcome. I know it's like not fully complete, but it's the best I can do. Um, there's a lot of, lot going on. All right, moving on now to item seven B, consideration of awarding the Delta County access control expansion to Bearcom in the amount of one hundred fourteen thousand, seven hundred seventy-four dollars, twenty-two cents. Um, do we have Ramona here or someone else presenting? I don't see.
Yes, I'm on the meeting and I believe Chris Stewart was going to be jumping on the call as well. I see him on there, um. So, yeah, he's on the call as well.
I apologize, my Zoom keeps cutting in and out, so I couldn't tell, but now I see you. Um, great, Chris, would you, um, like to unmute and speak or you want to go ahead, Ramona first?
I'll go ahead, um, and then, and introduce this and introduce Chris as well. So San Diego County is currently the fiscal agent on a twenty twenty-two Homeland Security grant. And in that grant was an approved project for a con- access control project in Delta County. Chris Stewart is, he is the executive chair on the all hazards, the West All Hazards Region. And the current structure with Homeland Security money is that it filters through regional, um, structures and which are designated for application to management of grant funds that are awarded from the state Homeland Security Fund, um, via FEMA. So he is the, he's the chair of that committee. Um, he is also the emergency manager at Delta County. So he is the project lead on this request. Because it's coming to you as commissioners, we, we are the fiscal agent on this grant, so we need your approval of, to award this bid. And then Chris and I will work for, will work, um, forward to get the contract um, finalized with Bearcom if that approval is done today. And we will present it to you for signature on the September third meeting. So, um, any questions?
Not for me.
No, I, what you provided us beforehand was really clear, um, in the packet. I, I really don't have any initial questions.
Okay, Chris did say that, um, he's, um, he's being blocked from speaking, so there, it looks like he's unmuted now. So I will let him give just a little quick spiel since he is um, the one knowing all the details. Chris?
Thank you. Yeah, apologies. Zoom was blocking me. Uh, Ramona did a good overview on this. Uh, this is a project that we've been working on for a while. Um, this is to close out the twenty twenty-two state homeland security grant. Uh, one of the projects that Delta County applied for was to uh, expand our access control for county facilities, um, when we've been working on this for a while. Uh, we have fifty thousand in capital funds dedicated to Delta County and then sixty-five thousand to the Homeland Security Grant. Uh, we did a round of bids back in June and actually no, uh, issued a notice of no award because all those were significantly over the available budget from both uh, the FEMA grant and Delta County funds. Uh, we redid the scope of work, pared, uh, removed some buildings from that, uh, reissued the bid in July, uh, closed that in early August and went to the bids that are in your packet today. And the recommendation would be to select Bearcom, which is on budget and is a company that has been installing our equipment for the past few years and we are familiar with.
Sounds prudent. Um, all right, is there any, are there any other questions or comments? Or shall we go ahead and do this?
Prepare to make motion.
Let's go.
I move to award the Delta County Access Control Expansion to Bearcom in the amount of hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, seven hundred and seventy-four and twenty-two cents with the payment program as illustrated in the.
Second that.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. The motion carries. Thank you to both Ramona and Chris. And Ramona, I really appreciate your willingness to be fiscal agents for so many of these projects. I know how competent you are and have great confidence in your ability to do this and thank you very much.
Right, thank you. Have a good day.
Take care.
Thanks a lot.
Bye.
Thank you.
Moving on now to planting, planning matters. Item eight A is consideration of the chair's signature on the Lawson Hill PUD development plan matrix regarding amendment to lot three oh nine dash one, the point at Lawson. And there is an asterisk by eight A indicating that this is a quasi judicial proceeding. Hello, Mr. Hubner.
Hi, Commissioners. I have a very brief presentation, non-digital presentation. Um, planning offices requesting the Board of County Commissioners authorization of the chairperson to sign this, um, amended Lawson Hill PUD development, development plan use matrix. Um, it's on behalf of David Ekman, um, who lives at three oh nine dash one, the point at Lawson Hill. The county's review process to modify setbacks in Lawson Hill um, is a two-step process. At first, the county planning director reviews and has an administrative action which is included in your packet. And then secondly, board signs off on the revised matrix pages. The planning director has approved the proposed insubstantial PUD amend- amendment. It will allow for a three-foot south setback and a four-foot north setback for, for uninhabited uses as shown in the exhibit in your packet. It's to accommodate David Ekman's shed roofs and supporting columns to protect the property's utilities and the rear deck and for an existing mudroom. There is a finding that there is compliance with all applicable standards in the land use code five dash fifteen oh two and with one condition that the north and south setbacks for lot three oh nine dash one, their ten-foot and five-foot setback shall remain as shown on this subdivision exemption plat for the single lot split recorded September seventeenth, two thousand and three for inhabited uses with the exa- exception of the mudroom. And staff recommends that the board, um, authorize the signature on the new final matrix pages um, in the following, um, sample motion included in your packet.
Okay, I had just one question. This is I'm sure everything's fine, but I noticed that the Ekman's letter mentioned that they had, um, uh, homeowners association approval for this. Is that, and then, but I didn't see a letter from the HOA. Is that something we need to verify and? Is that all?
He did include it. It, the, the, the approval was more for the actual project, the actual construction of the, um, um, project, um, and they were in favor of it.
Okay.
And it's, I, I should have mentioned, this is really, he's not doing a new project.
Right.
He's trying to protect his house, his utilities, his back deck and, um, and we're wholly in support of doing that.
Makes sense to me. Any questions from the Commissioners? Lance?
Not a question, but a
Comment?
Um, comment, I guess. I did have a conversation with Mr. Ekman about this prior to this conversation. However, um, I knew that it would probably be coming before us, so I did make sure that we did not discuss any particulars. And I just wanted to state that before the foreword so that you knew that although I did speak with him on the phone, I did not, um, allow any deep conversation about the details of this proposal.
Thank you for disclosing that. All right, uh, sounds like I don't see that the Ekmans are on the call. I guess they just knew that you would take good care of this, John. So I think we're probably ready for a motion. Anybody?
I move to approve the chair signature on the Lawson Hill PUD developer plan matrix regarding amendment to lot three oh nine five point at Lawson as presented in the packet with the motion that it is in the packet as the full motion. Would you like me to read that once in a while?
It's, it's up to you, but not necessary.
Well, you're good with the motion as it stands. I'm happy to stop there. If we need to hear the full language, I'm happy to read it.
Thumbs up. Sounds like where it pays is, um, just a friendly amendment. I, I think it's lot three oh nine dash one, not dash.
Thank you. You are exactly right.
All right, I'll second that motion with the addition of the friendly amendment.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye as well. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you for handling this, John.
This, this was the easy one. Thank you guys very much.
I understand. All right, now moving on to item nine A, affordable housing update with Dreya Ariza, our housing specialist. Hello, Dreya.
Morning, everyone. How are you?
Fine, thank you. Nice to see you.
Good to see everybody.
I'm gonna share your screen.
Yeah, I have that option on me.
There it is.
You're fine.
All right, so this is our August monthly updates. It's gonna be very brief. Um, I would like to mention that we have two items on the agenda, so I will mention one of them and talk more until it works. So today, we're going to be covering the housing projects for Illiam Deep Creek and Pathfinder along with an update on the housing needs assessment report and our local planning capacity grant. So I'm gonna go a little out of order here. Um, I start from the bottom with Pathfinder. So we have ongoing coordination with San Bernardo Asian Rain on finalizing that MOU for the water capacity and development of the feasibility study. And I'll pause and ask Mike if he has any additional updates right now that you want to add. If not.
No, we're still waiting for confirmation from their HOA.
Yeah. You know? Um, moving on to Deep Creek. Um, this is currently with CDOT and their procurement team. Uh, they did inform Jared and I that this could take um, a couple of months, just because it needs to go through the different, uh, divisions within their procurement department. So I got an update from our contacts on the eighth that, that's still in their court. So hopefully we get an update that they're making progress soon.
It's been a couple of months, hasn't it already?
Uh, we started drafting the agreement and then sent that to CDOT for review, there are feedbacks and comments. Uh, finalized that and then moved on to making a formal submission to the procurement team.
So when did we send it to them? Like, when was it? When did they start reviewing it?
I don't have the exact date off the top of.
Was it August or January or?
I, I think it, the formal draft that we had worked on and gotten back and forth with David Fox was probably June, late June.
Same.
Yeah. Um, you know, that's, that's when we actually had documents completed that they you know, they said, well, we think it's great, but we have lawyers, right? Um, and so it's with lawyers now.
So, more to come on that. Uh, moving on to our Illiam Housing Project. So I had a coordination meeting with the project team yesterday, so that consisted of myself, Lori Brandt from Buckhorn Engineering, uh, uh, Jim, Kio and Noel from Kio Studio Works as well as, uh, Bill and Rob from Gulf Engineering. And so that coordination meeting focused on, uh, was centered around the rockfall hazard and the drainage management design strategy and the project schedule. So Lori conducted the geotech report, the rockfall and the drainage studies. Um, there was a delay with the two last reports. Um, so, but we did get those. Everybody was able to review the technical findings, assess the design implications and outline next steps to progress towards the schematic phase. So some key takeaways from the rockfall drainage report, um, there are concerns for the drainage impacts from Lance Ertsim's road construction. So he is the property owner that sits above the county site. Um, apologies for not including an image in here, um, but a supplemental ditch on the north side of his property um, was a recommendation. And a burn to manage the debris, water and the sheet flow, so, um, future stormwater runoff. For these reasons, it's important to have slope stability, drainage, goalie and collaborative planning with Lance. Various well, mitigation options were also discussed, including the burns, rockfall fencing and burn designs using onsite materials was the proposed idea as a cost effects, cost effective solution. And then we moved on to talk about the design and construction options, the team weighed modular versus traditional construction options based on site conditions. So considering the slope and drainage implications, once again, we talked about a gravity wall as well as a, as a potential alternative to snail, uh, soil snail walling.
Soil mail. Soil mail.
Soil mail, yeah.
Yeah.
Same. Uh, recommendations there also included outward door openings and uh. Raising the ground floor for flood protection and A D A compliance. And then we moved on to. Schedule and cost considerations. So. As I mentioned, you know, those reports that Larry uh Lori prepared took a bit longer. Um, just for coordination efforts, weather was very dependent on the. Day that she had to fly the drone. So right now, we're running about three weeks behind schedule. We have a target date of September twelfth to. Finalize the schematic design, civil plan and cost estimates. Um, radon mitigation is going to be included in the design as well. Considerations there is for the foundation venting systems and uh post-construction testing. So our next action items and next steps. Uh Lori from Buckhorn Engineering recommended we share the reports with Lance, so he's informed of. The potential implications of his property and the county site and we collaborate with Hepburn there. And then Gulf will be providing cost estimates for road work, retaining walls, burns, following the schematic. Completion along with a narrative describing both modular and non-modular design options. So. We covered a lot yesterday.
Yeah.
But um, those are. Some key highlights from the notes. Is there any questions you have before I move on?
I don't have a question about the construction of the project. I'm glad to hear it's, you know, moving forward. Um, I do have a question, Mike, if it turns out that the sheriff's office doesn't need all of that overnight housing. Given that, you know, where it is and our original intentions, could we use that for other employees who might need overnight housing?
Unfortunately not.
Okay.
The restriction in the P U D um says that it could only be used as an accessory housing for the uh, the commercial venture, which the commercial venture is obviously a jail.
Okay.
So it'd have to be related to housing employees that work at that site.
Could it also be like deputies, you know, who are patrol deputies?
Potentially be.
Anybody in the sheriff's office.
Correct, and I guess I would also, uh, um despite. The sheriff, um, and that was not a. Uh, long conversation, but when he, we were reprising him of the project, um, because he was not included in this initial planning pre- previously. Um. He was questioning if that was the most urgent need for the county and. I think that we could agree that. Longer term, where we continue to need housing. And the situation that we have with the rentals that Mountain Village is allowing us to use above V C A. Is not a permanent arrangement and it is also not ideal as far as the mixing of employees sharing spaces.
Right.
So um. And I would. Encourage us to continue moving forward with this project. We may want to consider um in thinking of not just our on-call folks or dispatchers, but if there are. Other potential longer term. Uses to housing employees that um work in that facility. That may have a need, so it could, it could be beyond. Just the temporary housing as we had originally envisioned it, yes?
And have there been any discussions with the H O A as far as the? That potential scenario of more like long-term housing rather than all call, on-call housing?
When we originally met with them, they um encouraged us to expand the scope and to think of more units and things like that. We also um. Were hesitant to do so because we understand that that could trigger additional. Needs for uh infrastructure and agreements to um add to the water and sewer systems. Or, or other uh impacts, road impacts, if we were to go beyond. We also know that we have a twenty-five-hundred square foot limit of development, so. I like the plan that we have now. I think we could maybe modify it slightly to enable, you know, maybe it's one unit could be occupied by an employee that. Um, such as when we're hiring folks, if they don't have a place and they're relocating, maybe we could look at that as a temporary landing pad for that. One of those people. Potentially maximum two of those people. I just don't want to start occupying those long-term and then negate our original premise upon which we propose this.
Would the units be um designed, I guess this might be a Dreya question, um so that they could be used for either function overnight or long-term or does? Does that impact how they would be designed? Jared?
I, I think we have been proceeding with the design of a studio kind of function where they could, you know. Obviously, studios for a long-term living option aren't, aren't the best, right? But they are effective ways to, to house folks, so. Um, you know, to Mike's point, we've, we've been kind of proceeding with the design to allow people to have their own space while they're on duty or. While they're off duty, but on a long shift. Um, and in theory, it would not take any. Real amendment to have that be a, a longer term option as a studio apartment, so to speak. Um, but it, it is one of those things we would be working with the original intent. The, the accessory use to the principal use of the, you know, property is. Um, employees who work at the jail. So I could see, I, I know that there are deputies that office at the jail. Right? And I could see that nexus. Obviously, the C C S team, they do, uh, they spend all their time at the jail, so. Um, I, I think as we move ahead, we, we just need to have some more conversations with the sheriff about. You know, hey, here's the concept and here's how we were thinking about it and we, we admit that Dan wasn't really in. A lot of our previous conversations about uh this effort, so.
Sure. Um, I'm just maybe, uh, so I guess my, the question is though, like, we're, we're moving forward with design, right? And my question is, do you think we would need, would have a conversation about adjusting that design? I mean, for example, if we did think it was gonna be, we wanted part of it to be long-term, maybe we should have one, one bedroom and three studios or something like that. Or are we considering just continuing with the studio concept?
I think we have time to still have those conversations.
Yeah. And maybe Dan is the right person to have that conversation with? Does that make sense? I don't know.
Yes, I also think because Sheriff Covalt was appointed, um, you know, it's.
Hmm.
We want to make sure that this is going to be the longer term desire of if he should remain sheriff. Um, but whoever is sitting in that role longer term is likely to have very definite thoughts as previ- our previous sheriff did.
Yeah, um, I think getting the. Current sitting sheriff's thoughts on it, considering his tenure um with the department and the position he's in currently makes sense. Um. Just knowing that there are no deputies living on the east end of the county and that could, it just learning that that could be a potential, I think exploring that makes sense before we get. Too far down the road with the design concept.
And I, I just wanted to mention, I, I do think there was maybe a little bit of a disconnect with Sheriff Covalt about. You know, we, we had considered that we would give up the units that we occupy. In Mountain Village.
I see.
Right now with completion of this and I, I don't know if he was considering that. Because it is a, it is a current housing option for deputies and we would be working to kind of reprogram that and, and again, it's anytime we get. Housing unit availability, you know, and we release other affordable housing unit availability, we, we kind of get the, the double win, so.
That's right. Yeah, I think um, I agree with, with um Mr. Gleason that Dan is our sitting sheriff and um. He has the most intimate knowledge of what the needs are, so. I, and I do understand, Mike, he said it was just a kind of off-the-cuff conversation you had with him, but I think as we move into designing the. The layout and the number of units and all that, to have a, a conversation with him would be really helpful and perhaps Jen Dinsmore or whoever. Someone at the sheriff's office. That makes sense?
Yeah, I'll make a note of that comment.
Thanks, Dreya.
Great. Moving on to our housing needs assessment, uh, so. Update here, we have been compiling feedback for inclusion in that report submitted to DOLA that is still in progress. Uh, Pam and Jared. Have been coordinating on that effort. And as for our local planning capacity grant, that's two deliverables. Um, we'll go into the second one a bit more here in a moment, but our July. Activity report and reimbursement is underway, working with Ramona on that and aiming to submit that before the end of the month, so we're on track there. And that concludes this month's update. Any questions, comments? Appreciate your time.
Sure, likewise. Thanks for keeping us in the loop. And now I imagine we are moving on to item nine B, update on the stakeholder roundtable application. And next steps in the selection process.
Thanks, Dreya.
Is that a Jared thing now? We're, oh, no.
It's a K and I.
A K and Dreya, thanks. You can bring um that, a second microphone over with you too, so we can hear from both you and Kay.
Can I share the criteria?
Yeah, let's.
We didn't have a pres- we didn't have a presentation plan, but we did provide um. A memo, copy of the community engagement plan and the scoring criteria instructions, so I will just pull that up.
And just to uh let you know, um, we're accepting applications today. So if you know of anybody that was going to apply and hasn't done it yet, encourage them to uh get it in. Um, at this point, I think we have twenty-four, twenty-five applicants, so.
And just a quick question, the um, the application. Process closes today at five, is that correct?
Okay. Yeah, and what we've been doing is compiling all the applicants into a um, you know, master spreadsheet. And then, you know, setting it up for uh to facilitate um scoring and selection, you know, as a selection tool.
So staff um is requesting action on two items today, so the first one is appointing. A B O C C member and a S M R H A representative to the S S R group. Then the second action is um. Uh, making a determination if you would like an opportunity to speak with any of the applicants next Wednesday, um, so we can coordinate that effort. And then we can go into the scoring instructions and answer any questions you may have.
Okay, um. Is that it?
Or is there anything else you want me to? I have these.
Um, you know, so if, if you maybe scroll down a little bit here. Um, so what we're looking for when we, you know, select our ten to twelve members in, in, in addition to about the nine members that are already fixed. Um, you know, because we have B O C C, planning commission town, Tarryide Town and Mountain Village, S M R H A, um, and staff. Um, so.
We also have a Telsky representative who was fixed.
Well, no, not, not necessarily fixed. Um.
Okay.
Uh, but that's an option, uh, and I haven't received an application there.
I think we just had an email exchange, remember, Kay? And.
Yeah, I wasn't in on the email exchange, but um, uh, you know, so. Town, Tarryide and Town of Mountain Village, we said, no, you don't need to submit an application, but uh T S G. Uh, it would be nice if they did because, you know, you have all of the major employers represented. Uh, in um our uh. Potential candidates, um, and you know, you know. You'll have to figure out, you know, your composition.
Um, sorry, all of the major employers are represented in the candidates. The major employers are the county and the two towns and the ski resort, right?
Uh, county, two towns, ski resorts, school district and uh medical center.
And medical center, okay. Um, let me just, I'm looking at my email exchange. Oh, so hmm, we didn't hear from John, okay.
John just left for a week to Amsterdam and I spoke with him two days ago and. I think he was, he is the most logical choice. I know Sherida Reader is a potential, but.
Um, I'm just looking at the note that I, so I had spoken to John Miller um at Telsky to see if he would be interested in participating. He is very eager. Um, Kay, I'm just looking at the note that I, the follow-up note I sent to him on August sixth on which you were copied. Um, and it does say that I spoke with you and we agreed that he does not need to apply to the S S R. We're happy to have Telsky's participation representing the county's largest employer, but we asked him to reply all of the email. Confirming his interest, which we have not, as I can see, received, so. I, I think the way I presented it to John was that he did not have to apply and that he would be one of the. Kind of appointed members, uh, and so. That's, I think we should move forward with that since we had discussed it and that's what I told him, unless anybody wants us to change that.
I mean, that's gonna be up for you guys to decide next week. Um.
Well, I think we need to decide that now, whether Telsky's gonna be part of that consideration next week or whether they are. Um, part of the sort of standing appointed group, Jared?
I would, I was just going to suggest that y- you can make that call right now if you three agree. That Telsky is so integral to the process that, that we just make a seat for them, right? I, I think we can do that now and then we can proceed with um. Grading all of the other applicants based on the criteria that have been developed um and decide if we want to interview them, but it, it is kind of one of those. Um, we. I know Telsky is the largest employer in the region and so that makes a lot of sense to have their participation. Um, but we also don't want to discount the contributions of all the other employers. Um. It, it's one of those catch-and-go kind of scenarios because there will ultimately be other. Vendors, other businesses who say, well, I wish I was, you know, got an automatic seat, but we understand the. The magnitude that um kind of T S G projects in the community, so.
I think based on what you just said, Jared, and what Ann said about having a previous email conversation with John Miller, that I'm happy to. Reserve a seat for Telsky as you're requesting.
Yeah, I agree with that and I think beyond just the number of employees that they, that they employ. Um, I think. Many in the community look to Telsky as being a regional leader and having that. Their input on. Zoning is important, um, just to have that voice in the conversation.
Thank you for that support. I would also add that anytime Telsky is willing to cooperate and participate, I would like to support that effort and John was super enthusiastic, so. Okay, we've made that decision.
Yeah.
Um, I will ask John to just confirm his interest, I, I thought he had, but go ahead, Kay.
Yeah, um. So uh, the. Um, so stakeholders' role, um, just kind of run you through some of the basics. Um, will be to review and comment on the project as it develops. Um, be a sounding board for key concepts and alternatives. Serve as liaisons to their respective networks and then bring feedback back to the roundtable. And help amplify the outreach efforts. Um. And uh. We're looking for a membership that is balanced by geography, professional experience and knowledge and lived housing experience. And you may have members that uh don't necessarily come in strongly on all three boxes there. Um, but, you know, they do come in strongly on one. And uh, you know, uh, being that we want to listen to all voices, we're gonna be looking for some balance here. Um, so we're looking for people with tech, technical expertise in housing development, planning processes or legal framework. Um, we're looking at their professional position and organizational affiliation. Uh, we want uh the S S R to be representative of, of a diverse cross-section of the community. We are, we'll be looking at their time connectedness and experience in the community, whether or not they're providing a voice for key affected groups, and then also their availability and capacity. And we, we've listed a number of desirable sectors, and this ranges from people who rent, affordable housing, deed restricted housing, up to people who develop, everybody in between, you know, people that are on the periphery, you know, finance, real estate, design, development, what have you. And but basically what we're doing is we've laid out some scoring for each individual on five categories. In the spreadsheet, we also have identified their geographic area and what their primary and secondary experiences are. And, you know, so this is scored on a scale of one to five, five being the highest. And then from there, I think we were looking at us pre-scoring, was that? We haven't necessarily had all of our conversations.
One of the suggestions we had was, since applications closed this afternoon, we would email a link to the commissioners tomorrow afternoon, since we have to prepare agenda documents for next week along with the application. So you can begin reviewing everything and then a tentative date to have at least your scores tallied by next Monday afternoon. And then that gives us enough time to prepare everything to present for next Wednesday, if if that would work, as a suggestion.
And I, I do, I know it's a, it's a little bit of a time sensitive issue. We do have a little bit of extra time, but we do want to kind of get the show on the road and actually start doing, going through this process. And so with that, you know, there is the inherent question of on top of scoring, do you think that interviews in some form are warranted? And I know that's hard to say right now, because you don't have the list of all the folks. But that's going to be a question that we would kind of want to pose to you. Once we send that link to you, you may want to score it and then say, hmm, I've, I've got a couple ties and maybe we interview a small number based on our compilation. Or alternatively, you know, maybe it's a very clear delineation and we are able to proceed, but I assume we'll be in communication about that after kind of that Monday deadline. We're seeking to have scoring completed by. And then we can make a game plan. It's a little quick to turn around interviews for, from Monday to Wednesday. So we'll, we'll kind of have to play that one by ear as we see the results, so.
Just to kind of throw a wrench or muzzle wrench in this, how important is it that's a point that the appointment occur on August twenty-seventh? Because it does feel kind of rushed in terms of reviewing twenty-five, maybe thirty-five applications and also scheduling interviews. What do you think?
So we're anticipating our first meeting to be in early October. Certainly that gives us, you know, a couple of meetings, you know, if you want to continue it. You know, to, you know, start on the twenty-seventh and then, you know, you know, move on on the third or the seventeenth.
I agree that we're not in a position to come to a full decision on the twenty-seventh. I think that if we were to accomplish our initial round of scoring and then discuss on the twenty-seventh what our next step should be, whether it's interviews of everybody, interviews of some, or no need for interviews, the scoring is clear. That would allow us to stick with what Kay said, which is to then have the time in September to flesh out and finalize and be well in advance of our October first meeting.
Yeah, agreed.
I, I think that's a prudent way to proceed. I had not anticipated this many applications, which I think is really good news that we do have this many. And so I had originally thought that that one week deadline would be fine, but recognizing how many folks have applied, I think we do need to give ourselves a potentially a little more time. And I exactly agree with what you suggested, Lance. Does anybody feel differently? No? Okay. Does that provide the direction you need? On the, on item, yeah, the second item there? The, yes, on the confirmation, yeah, now we need to address the appointment of the BOCC and regional housing rep?
Yes.
Well, I can speak to the regional housing rep if that's okay.
Please.
The next meeting of the Housing Authority is scheduled for Monday, September eighth. It feels to me like we could discuss this and get a volunteer at that meeting if the timing works for the rest of the group, knowing that we're holding a seat. If that is a problem, let me know. Otherwise, I'll make sure that's on the Housing Authority agenda for then.
The timing of that seems appropriate to me.
Okay. Mike, any concerns?
No.
Yeah, okay. Then I will make sure that happens. So I think it's on the tenth. I'll be able to, but you all know that I've got volunteers from the Housing Authority.
That sounds great, Lance.
As far as the commissioner to join the group when willing to volunteer.
Fantastic.
Appreciation, yes. I moved that we appoint Lance Swearing as the BOCC rep on the strategic stakeholder roundtable.
I second that.
May it be as easy as the East End Master.
I'm going to give a vote.
I.
I swell. Enthusiastically appoint you to the SSR. I just had one very small comment in terms of the purpose of the SSR that Dre reviewed. And one thing I didn't see in here is that these folks would actually provide suggestions for code adjustments and other adjustments, other, other recommendations to this body of work. It sounds the way it's written here, and I imagine this is what you anticipated, but it sounds more like it's a sounding board liaison, you know, feedback. And I think some of these folks are have a lot of expertise and will be able to actually provide suggestions. And I wanted to make sure that we allowed for that and encouraged that.
Yeah, there's nothing in how we've been setting things up that would preclude that, so.
Okay. Do you think that's the understanding? Is that your understanding? Okay.
I would suggest that it, it is kind of implicit that some of these folks have run into a piece of regulation that has been challenging or or some permutation in their development process or their experience that they're able to say like, hey, you know, I've got an idea about how to make that better. And we, as a group, can work through that, flesh out maybe the reasons why or why not in a lot of those.
That's what I was thinking as well. And I would just suggest that if we have future iterations of things in writing, that we actually include that. So it's crystal clear to everybody that, that that's also one of their roles if they're able to, to participate in that way. Regina?
I just have a quick question, kind of eleventh hour, because the application is closing today. But do you have a good cross-section of applicants from throughout the county? I E. I have been encouraging folks in my district to apply, but I'm just curious if that's, you know, kind of meeting the criterion as far as applicants today.
Yeah, the majority are definitely from the East End. But we do have some from the Norwood area as well. And like I said, we're getting a full, a pretty full cross-section of experience as well.
Great. And Down Valley, is there some applicants that represent?
So nobody from Down Valley yet?
I think it was not going to say no, but just going off of the list without pulling it back up. I think they didn't stand out as the other areas did.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, great, thanks. I think we're ready to move on. Appreciate both of you, all of you. Very productive. We will be looking for those. We're going to get the applications and a way of rating. And actually, this probably will be clear in what you send, but I was just wanted to clarify that for oh, okay, never mind. I, I think I got it. Thanks. The, how we use the rating, but it's good. Okay. Thank you. Moving on now to four, no, uh, ten A. Manager Matters. Mike, would you like to start with your general updates, or do you want to start with item A?
See, we have some attendees in the room from the ECAP board, so let's go to that one.
Okay, item A is consideration of the proposed ballot measures for the November election. And this is a continuation of our conversation last week where staff made a few suggestions.
Thank you. And we've been working, Jerry has done a great deep dive into some of the required ballot language. Just as a little brief reminder, we had originally started with this idea of potentially asking for numerous different questions, starting with the potential reallocation of lodging tax dollars per the new state law that expands purposes. The board gave us direction to hold off on that one. And the other two that we had discussed were the potential of reducing the ECAP and MHA mill levies from the five and a quarter restriction, percent additional restriction that is from Senate Bill two, three, three. We met with some representatives of the VHS as well as ECAP. I know that VHS is going to be having a meeting on the twenty-eighth. And so they said that they would give us a, a indication of whether or not they would like us to move forward with the ballot question at that time. So we are moving forward and drafting a question in anticipation, should they say yes, because we know that the very next meeting on September third only give us two days, remaining days before the September fifth deadline to give that question to the clerk. So we're considering today, or not considering, we're getting your feedback on the early childhood and mental health mill levies allowing for those two funds to collect their total increase in value. The county's valuation went up approximately eighteen point four percent during this latest valuation cycle. Because of restrictions in the types of property tax that is allowable, they wouldn't even be able to currently collect their full five and a quarter percent. We shared with them, you know, it works out to be in the high four percent range. And so I'd love to hear from those representatives here with us today about their feelings on that. Greater potential amount to be collected. And then the other one is regarding our road bridge fund, where the last time we were sitting together, we proposed two different measures. One was to allow full collection of our current one point nine mils that we've been assessing for road maintenance. Again, this would allow us to at least get back on track with our maintenance. If we are going to stay under the five and a quarter rule, it's going to mean a lesser standard of maintenance, because our expenses continue to rise at a percentage greater than that five and a quarter percent. We will not be able to keep quite as good a care of our roads if we do not do anything for road bridge. The second measure was to ask voters if they'd be interested in adding two tenths of a mil and also allowing the full collection of that. So the revenue impacts of those two different measures, under the first scenario, it would allow us approximately three hundred thousand dollars additional. And with that, we could keep what our current operations are and then honor, such as we, the board gave direction to this year, to pick up one or two additional gravel roads for improvement. We know that we've authorized fifty-seven P as well as sixty M to have those roads improved to a more historic maintenance standard. Those roads have degraded over time. And so when we're doing maintenance, unless they, we invest, I'm going all over the place. So basically, do we want to ask voters to collect the same amount of full mills, which would be the three hundred thousand, which allows us to essentially maintain where we are and make slight improvements over time? Or ask the voters for the two tenths of a mil, which would collect an additional three hundred thousand, or a total of six hundred thousand more, which would not only allow us to either be more aggressive in tackling and improving our gravel roads, but we could also consider paving some small sections of roads over time where we're having degradation that we can't reach too. So with that, I know Jared has some language and I apologize in advance, because the legislation that passed requires specific introductory verbiage. Likewise, favor requires specific additional verbiage. So when we get to the road bridge mill levy, and I'd like to handle that one last, it gets very complicated very quickly and the language is far from ideal. It's not what we wish we could ask voters, because we know that we can be very clear and simple. But because of those statutory requirements, it is going to be quite confusing. So let's start with the easier one. And regarding the early childhood mill levies and I almost encourage us to hear first from our representatives of that board and Bright Futures, Kathleen Merritt, Kathy Barber, regarding their thoughts.
I agree.
And just as a piece, one last little piece of background, when we met together, John Pendolfo had joined us and he had consulted with his legal. And they thought that they, their legal originally had a different interpretation and thought that they might already be exempt from the five and a quarter percent cap.
They, the school, or they, VHS?
VHS, but using the school district's attorney for their consultation. Upon further examination, he has concurred with our legal and the preponderance of legal, county legal opinions in the state, so that we know we will have to go to a question if we want to allow full collection of these files.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Hi Kathleen.
Hi Kathy. Merritt, I am the chair of the Early Childhood Advisory Panel and Executive Director of Bright Futures, who administers the Strong Start Program. And we thought we were here today to talk about CCAP waitlist.
Oh, no, sorry.
Oh, no. But there are a lot of exciting feelings around potentially going to, I will touch on this, a lot of exciting feelings around going back to the ballot in November. We've been working alongside John and have real close that we will need to take it back to the ballot to collect the full point seven five mils. I need to get with the Early Childhood Advisory Panel in full to make a decision, but you know, my feelings are we would go back to the ballot in that we would hopefully, it would just be one question for the behavioral health and the early childhood mill levy.
Together.
Together.
Okay.
But again, this is, that would also be up to the administrator of the behavioral health or the mental health mill levy, which is Tri-Town Health Network and in that solutions panel. But those are my initial thoughts and feelings around going back to the ballot. Because we are now, you know, currently we're investing under a million dollars a year in a four million dollar problem. So if, if we were able to maximize the mill levy we had, it would get us closer to being able to better meet the needs of early childhood in our county.
Kathleen, I have a question about timing, getting with the ECAP board, knowing that the upcoming meeting isn't until September ninth, and this language needs to be solidified by September fifth. Do you feel confident in?
After this meeting, I was going to email the ECAP board to see if we could zoom on Monday for just a discussion around what we got to do.
Okay.
So, in touch.
Great.
Okay, and then we're probably not able to talk about the CCAP.
So that's why I'm the pride. We're all, we were.
Do we need to agendize that for next week?
That would be great. We have a lot of CCAP needs and we're on a waitlist right now.
Okay, so we're into CCAP waitlist next week and that would be with you and Linnea.
And Linnea and Alex and Kathy.
Okay.
When the Board of County Commissioners voted to you know, go to a waitlist, there was always the understanding that we would be revisiting it around this time. Okay, some updated data for y'all.
Okay, perfect. We will see you next week and Carmen will be in touch to let you know about what time that will be agendized.
That sounds great. I mean, it was kind of a happy little accident.
You're in this time. Are you, oh, sorry Lance, yes, please.
So I finish your thought.
Nope, I was gonna move on to another part of the discussion. Keep going.
Okay, Kathleen, Mike said is that your board will support the placing of this question on the ballot measure. So I think that when we take this back to continued discussion, we will proceed as if that is the case, knowing that if you and your board determine that's not what you prefer, we can easily just stop.
Sounds good.
Rather have all the homework done than presume that you are not in favor of collecting.
I think that's a prudent approach.
Right.
Yes, yes. Are we gonna review essential language at this point, Jared? If we are, I wanted to know if Kathleen, Kathleen wanted to stick around for that.
I was, I was planning to recite sadly what we have developed thus far. That just so you can hear a little bit of the nuance and the inflection, the, make sure it's hitting the points and.
I understand, I because the last time we had some of these discussions, the newspaper, because it was shared publicly, requested and received that and then published that. I'm very hesitant to share things because the public will start forming opinions and should you modify or change language or direction, I don't want anything that the public has already made a decision about in their own heads. That's why I've asked Jared, I asked him not to share his memo in advance. It is still a draft. These are still draft questions and because this is so important, that's my hesitation.
Understood, makes sense, and I will listen carefully.
Likewise.
And I'll, I'll, I'll simply apologize in advance.
Commissioners, we can provide you individually, we can give you hard copies of these in the future so that you can look at the verbiage afterwards.
You know, I'm not even sure we need to go through Jared's reading if we understand that the language is going to accomplish what we're talking about. It doesn't seem necessary to hear the, read through some preamble and technical language necessarily.
Well, at some point we will want to approve the language and, right, so I'm just thinking how many weeks we have to do that? And whether we, we only have this week, next week, and then the following week we'll be approving it? No?
No, I think we'll need to approve this on the third. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, today, next week, and then the following.
Correct.
Right. Okay, I'm missing.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm.
A Wednesday there.
Just to, you think, cause you provide better direction if you can read it first?
I think so. I'm willing to listen, but Jared's setup for this sounds like it's gonna be a good chunk of legalese to set up the actual question. It sounds like it's already going to be confusing for the layperson. I'm a layperson, Kathleen. I suspect that even though I listen with my very best ears, that I'm gonna need to read this before I'm gonna have a firm opinion.
I mean, I definitely prefer to read things as well, but if there are any glaring absence or, you know, gaps or, or issues, we could get ahead of it by having a quick listen today.
I mean, my only thought is we have a very captive audience here, having Kathleen in the room. And if there is anything glaring that she picks up on from just hearing what Jared is reading, it might be really efficient to get that feedback right here, right now.
And maybe what, I, I, I like that. Maybe what you could do is say, here's the legalese and we'll just listen to that and then put it aside and then maybe you could read the the piece that we actually have some control over and we could just give you a real initial reaction. Does that sound all right?
However you like.
Let's do it that way.
Okay, that sounds good to me as well.
So the, the first question is the combined question for E cap and M hap, those two advisory panels, those two pieces of mill levy and as of now, and, and I'll kind of mention, this is the preamble. Shall San Miguel County waive the 5.25% property tax limit imposed by section 29, 11704 CRS for the Early Childhood Education Fund? And for the Mental Health Services Fund, without an increase in the current property tax mill levy rate of 0.75 mils for each purpose in all future property tax years and be authorized to collect, retain and spend the full amount of all revenues generated from the county's property tax mill levy for those purposes in fiscal year 2026 and all fiscal years thereafter to be expended for all lawfully authorized county purposes within the Early Childhood Education Fund and Mental Health and Mental Health Fund until and unless repealed by a majority of the registered electors of San Miguel County voting thereof.
As a layperson, I understood that.
You did? I feel that I do too.
So the, the, the pieces are the requirement to say, can we remove the 5.25% limit? We're referencing the piece of statute that governs that section. We are referencing the 0.75 mils for each fund. Because that, you know, that may be a little bit of a challenge and I, I toyed with the idea of saying point seven five mils for the Mental Health Services Fund and point seven five mils for the for the, the Early Education Fund, so on and so forth. And kind of continuing to spell out that we want this to last ongoing, because there are provisions that would potentially, you know, some folks say, oh, we'll only do it for five years or 10 years or 15, and we want this to be a perpetual question. So any feedback on that?
I'm just curious where you're at with count, because there's a limitation, right, of 200 words?
No, that was incorrect. That, that is regarding statements. The ballot question can be as long as.
All right, disregard.
I would just wanted to confirm that both of these mill levies are countywide, because that you did say all registered voters of San Miguel County, they're not just our one, okay?
Correct. These are, these are countywide levies that cover, you know, they pay the same amount and ignore on their property value as they pay here and tell you, right?
Kathleen? I'm wondering if there is a way to add in there and, and double down that the voters had already approved the point seven five mils in 2017 and 2018 respectively with the early childhood mill levy being approved in 2017 and then the mental health mill levy in 2018, just to remind voters that they, they already approved this at 62%.
Right.
Or is that just something we do through marketing and campaigning?
We had that discussion, that's something we'll.
Okay. I think previously approved is a great idea. Do you think it's important that we include those years? I think that might be a little more detail than we need.
No, just.
Does anyone else? Okay.
Just remind voters. The simple term previously approved, but know that when you or anyone is discussing this, that we can add that additional back with.
And then I'm also wondering if we add in the dollar amount that we would be receiving.
So that is not technically a requirement to, you know, and, and I think that this is a difference between what we know as a Tabor election and if I read the ballot question for the increase of the road and bridge levy, it does include that Tabor language that says, you know, can we receive X amount of dollars in year one? This, that is not a requirement of 525 removal, because that's already been an authorized vote with removal of the Tabor provisions in that 2017 question in the case of the E cap board and the 2018 of the Mental Health Services Board. So we, we don't have to include that, but I, again, I do think it's, it's important to point out, we're, we're really talking about, about $88,000 additional in, in any one, you know, in this year for each one of those funds. So that, I think that's a marketing point.
Yeah.
It's not required for the ballot.
Okay.
One of the things that we believe Kathleen is that the longer the ballot question, the more likely it is to be declined simply because of the teeth.
Good point. I think with Kathleen's suggestion of previously approved, I think we're looking good and I would suggest if that's all right, that you make that change and then distribute hard copies to the commissioners so we can also have a visual look and read.
I'm making those notes now, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Do you want to stick around for the road and bridge ballot measure?
Well, head back to work.
Thank you.
Nice to see you both.
Okay, on to road and bridge.
So as, as we discussed last week, we've, we've kind of tried to break the road and bridge issue to, to it. Two questions, and, and interestingly enough, back in 20, or 1998, when we did have the half mil approved for road and bridge, it was, it was not two questions, it was one question with two parts. So again, there's all kinds of nuance that continues in this exercise. But we, we've just gone ahead and crafted two questions with one of them being conditional to the other. Right? And so and, and I will tell you, we're, we're still reading through a couple other examples of conditional ballot questions to make sure it hits the right points, but, but we think we've gotten somewhere. So the, the first question that we were suggesting we would pose would be the increase question. So that is to retain the current half mil road and bridge levy to formally reprogram the 1.4 mils that we have historically been using from general fund resources over to the road and bridge fund and then adding the two tenths of one mil for that additional road and bridge. Additional road and bridge for a grand total of 2.1 mils for the road and bridge purpose.
But the point two is this conditional second piece, no?
That is, that is not how I have written it. The, the way I've written it is we would ask for the, you know, the pieces and the new piece, the two, two tents. And if that were to fail, we would ask secondarily, can we have the two pieces without the 5.25% limit?
Because we need to make the structure change in.
I was just thinking, I was thinking of those as the other way around, but.
Why did you pose the, why did you choose to pose this question first?
Largely because if it passes, the other question's superfluous, right?
But the voter will have to read and vote on both, correct?
Correct.
So it's just.
Could we structure it in the same way as the previous one of just one question with the two parts?
I assume we could.
Cause that might be easier than to Lance's point, them voting yes on the first one and then going, wait, how does this factor now? For the second one.
I envision this as an if then staple, like a computer program. I would prefer it to be all lumped together if possible. I know that will be longer, but I think it eventually will make more sense to read than to have two questions that are linked but not combined.
I, I don't have a strong feeling about that part of it. I, but my thought was that we would ask to release the 5.25 on the existing 1.9 and then ask for an additional point two mills.
The only part that you didn't say that Jared did was the shifting of the 1.4 from the general fund.
Right.
I, I was under the impression they were going to be two separate ballot questions.
Me too.
Well, in that case Jared's got that set up for him.
Right.
Right.
But, but it, but different ones.
Yeah, yeah.
What were you thinking?
I thought they were going to be two, like, because what I'm understanding that you're, you've drafted is an if then, no, no, okay, I'm misinterpreting that.
Actually backwards, Jared's got two separate questions, but feels it's possible to meld the two together.
I see.
I love the opinion that that could be better, but without having a chance to see both and understand how they look both on the page and to my brain, I don't know.
Yeah. Okay.
And I, I, I do think there's always a challenge, right? When we have the multi-part, what does yes mean?
Yeah.
And what does no mean?
Yeah.
And that, that is one of the values of two separate questions, because you're saying yes to one, yes to the other. But to your point, Commissioner Waring, there is a challenge here. If somebody voted yes to the first, they may scratch their head and say, what, what, what about the second? What does this mean? And so that, that is a bit of a, an issue. And I do think the lead in the language that I've tried to put in already, you know, it has within the first two sentences, that conditional language. Shall this question be conditioned on the passage of the prior?
Yeah, I think this is very confusing already.
Yes. Yeah, it's yeah, really confusing. And I mean, really what we're proposing coming to voters with is should the 5.25% be sorry, lifted, lifted to allow for road and bridge to be whole, right? To, to be able to fund road and bridge and then the additional 1.4% to not be utilizing the general funds, but directly linked to the mill levy.
Yeah.
That's one thing we're asking folks taxpayers. The second part is increasing the mill levy.
That's what I thought too. I thought the second part was increasing the mill levy.
I think that Jared was going to get to the first one as the second question. And maybe it does make sense, Jared, to flip flop so that you've got the E cap question of status quo, okay? And then you've got road and bridge status quo, okay? And then you've got the Coda or transcript of road and bridge actual increase at the very end of the ballot.
I like that. That works with my brain.
Uh, same. I, I think lumping them together, although I do see the benefits there for potential simplicity. It makes my, I, I get confused immediately and I've been mulling over this for some time now and just for the layperson. I feel, and my initial thoughts is that's going to be ultimately very confusing and.
Well, if we're trying to think about how to present a package that is clear, I think that the keeping the first question first, the first question first, and then we're able to say, these are actually the same concept, but for different points.
Yeah.
And then to add that final question of an actual increase has, that's your call. We're everything is a voter's decision, but this one is the new twist.
Right. I, I think that we can recraft this in a way where we, we hit that point of you know, can we keep the current mill levy without the 5.25% limit?
Right.
And then add, and it would be a second question to say, and can we increase that without, again, the same things, we would be removing the Tabor limitation, the 5.5% limitation and the 5.25% limitation.
On the point two.
On the new levy, because that's already been done for the remainder.
I like that. Yeah.
Oh, I was just gonna, with all of this necessitated legal language, I think that the message should be with all of those requirements, in, in addition to all those requirements, really getting it through to the voter that this, if this ballot question is maintaining services and this one is improving services. Trying to get that across as simply and clearly as possible, because that's really what we're asking at this point.
That may be what is written in the blue book.
Right.
There's the prose. I don't know if we want to add that language or not. It seems like if we can do it in five, seven words or less. Add that language or not. It seems like if we can do it in five, seven words or less, that's great. And if it requires another full sentence or two, that's maybe too much. So Jared, there's a writing challenge for you to be extremely brief and clear.
I, I will work on being, uh, as brief as possible and as clear as possible. I do think that the, the change in approach you guys have discussed here is, well, make it a little easier. Um, because we don't have to make them conditional. Um, and so that, that is, I think, a good help in adding clarity, not tying those two things together. Um, of course, we could have the case where one passes and one fails. We get a new mill levy, but it is not. Outside of the five two five limit. But again, those, those are the things that.
Well, but let's just add the five, add the five to, in the second question.
Yeah.
Let's add the mill levy plus all the first questions.
Yeah.
Happen.
Yeah, yeah, that would be it.
Status quo, or we're going to get status quo plus, but we're not going to get plus.
Yeah. I think that's a good idea. Definitely. Yeah. What we might end up with is point two five that is unlimited. And one point nine that is still limited to five point two five. Um, Jared, I think you did such a good job on writing that first draft of the E cap M cap. And I think Lance made the point that if we can sort of set up those two ballot measures as parallel or, you know, very. What I'm going to suggest is that you use as much of that same language in the first one as you can in the second one. Recognizing that you also have to add in the point about the one point nine.
Yeah.
Um, but I think that was really good and, uh, yeah, I said it.
And I, I would credit Mara to a lot of the value add here. She's, she's the one who's been watching. My drafting and adding the language that she's like, oh, you forgot this, Jared. So I, I can't say we're doing the solo.
Thank you, Mara. Thank you very much.
And I'll echo that, that I was bracing myself for that first question to be very confusing and I found it to be really clear and straightforward. So, good job.
Sadly, you're on the inside of the sausage factory.
That's.
And I, I, at, at least at this point, I don't think it's worthwhile to even recite what we've drafted thus far. And I'll go back to the drawing board and, um, share that alike, so.
So we will readdress this next week.
Yes.
Um, that would be great. And where do I want to just make sure we add that?
That's a special move.
Correct.
Then change. They're all special. We love specials. It's very common.
It's okay. Yeah, seven, eight more years. Everything done by then, I'm not sure of it.
But you said fifteen yesterday. I just, I just wanted you to be on record.
All right. And so, um, again, we'll get something to review visually as well. Thanks so much. Um, okay. Let's move on now to the remainder of manager matters.
Okay. Um, first off, I'm going to be out later tomorrow afternoon and Friday, um, to head to Michigan for my parents' sixtieth wedding anniversary.
Go mom and dad.
Yeah, I'll have a, a cell phone and you'll have a Jared. So I don't think anything's going to fall through the cracks. Um, we already talked briefly about our meetings with E cap, uh, and our outreach to the mental health. Our BHS last week. And so we are moving forward as you already gave us direction. I'm drafting those questions in anticipation of hearing an official, uh, stance from those boards. Uh, we had a great goals retreat, as you mentioned earlier, Commissioner Brown, and we're going to be following back up on Tuesday, September second. Um, we'll be hearing from Patrick Rondeelli, our facilitator from DOLA in the meantime, to try and finalize those goals, uh, that Tuesday. Afternoon or morning rather. Um. Primetime daycare in Norwood, uh, I had a conversation with their director yesterday and they are, um. In financial streets to the point that they are looking to potentially have to shut down. They currently serve eighteen, uh, youth and they were anticipating, um, they had a waitlist going into this fall. Um, all eight folks on that waitlist have found other, um, areas and they are having, uh, extreme difficulty. Making their payroll. They are funded in part through the early childhood mill levy. However, they're supposed to receive their next payment in October. They've requested advanced payment of that. Um, and I'm just putting this on your radar because they're holding an emergency meeting next Tuesday evening. And I, uh, would like to add it to our agenda on Wednesday to discuss, um, should we intervene and do something? I think in either, in any of the scenarios, um, to keep their doors open, it's likely that they're going to have to, um. Shut down at least, where is it? Their. Would have to school, shut down the preschool, uh, room, which would be five of the eighteen students. Um, we talked about other funders, other emergency funders, um. But that is just to give you a heads up that I'll have more information as well as potentially a financial request from primetime to keep their doors open. Um, I inquired also if they had reached out to BHS about additional funding to keep their doors open because. Uh, even if they did make that reduction, um, the loss of thirteen seats would be pretty impactful in the Norwood community, yes, Commissioner Waring.
I believe I heard you say reach out to BHS, but I'm not sure if you meant BHS or E cap.
Well, E cap, uh, I'm sorry, I was, yes, I did mean cap, not BHS. Um, uh, Bright Futures is what I meant to say, who is administering that for E cap.
I, I wonder if that is part of what.
Kathleen.
They were here to talk to us about today.
Catherine will be with us next week. Mike will have more information.
Yeah.
It seems like we want to have all those heads in the room anyways, so the timing's good.
Yeah.
And I think we can just take this all as a heads up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who, who, um, owns and operates primetime?
I spoke with Melissa Merrill, who's their director.
So it's not part of the Norwood school system?
It's not.
It's not?
Oh, the building is.
The building is, that's right. Oh, yeah. Were, do you used to teach there at primetime?
I started primetime with a couple other ladies.
Yeah, Carmen.
Oh my gosh, your sainthood just increased.
I started the Norwood preschool and then the after school program and went from there.
So it is, is it a nonprofit?
It is a nonprofit. Right Stuff Community Foundation was created under that as primetime. Um, the Norwood preschool uses, um, one of the rooms for their space. And I don't know what their agreement is on cleaning and.
Okay.
Helping to maintain that space anymore. I've kind of been out of it for a while, but it, it hits close to my heart.
It, yeah, ditto. Um, and I also just give you some clarity on the preschool. There's some crossover there. Where some of the students are enrolled in the school district preschool, but it's only a half day, four day a week program. And so the, you know, the, those students go to, some of them go to the school district preschool. But then the other half of the day is covered by the primetime preschool. So it. Logistically for working families, it's like both programs, um, are. Pretty crucial for that, that coverage of, of daycare. Yeah.
Would it prove us to have, request the attendance of a Norwood school representative next Wednesday as well to put that. Part of the equation into our conversation.
I mean, uh, I don't think it would hurt, however, I, I know that Melissa Merrill can speak very, um. She, she knows all the ins and outs of that, so.
Melissa started with me at.
Yeah.
I think she was fourteen and now she's the director, so she has all that history.
She has some good background.
Well, let's assume that don't need extra school support, but we do need Melissa. At least we'd like to hear her if she's available.
Yeah.
Teaching.
I'll work with her.
And that Kathleen Merritt will be in contact with her and Mike and we'll try to get as much of the. Players' views exposed on next Wednesday, so like, you know, how, how they see them, what. Emergency funding would do long-term, because I think that will be the final question is. If we can make the save now, how long does the save last?
Exactly. Um, and I would need just a little more background on primetime, just because I'm familiar with the preschools on this end of the county, but not over there. So just like, who are they serving? You know, is it after school program? Is it, I just don't know. Is infants, whatever that is, just a little quick background.
I think Kathleen Merritt and.
And Melissa can provide that. Yeah, okay. Thanks for the heads up, Mike.
Thank you.
Sorry to hear about the issues.
Yeah, me too. Um. The commissioners or some of the county commissioners, planning commissioners and staff will be, uh, heading out on Monday, August twenty fifth to the Borough Mine. And Sunday Mine for their tour. Um. And I believe you're going Commissioner, um, Blaisen, and are you going Commissioner?
I am.
Perfect. Commissioner Waring, you are not.
Not available.
Very good. Um, last week, the Gannison Valley Transportation Planning Region Meeting, uh, we heard revisions to their ten year plan. With related, uh, reductions in funding across numerous programs. They have put their multimodal opportunities fund. Um, which is the fund that initially we use for the feasibility of the Down Valley Connector Trail. It's, um, some of the Fleming. Actually, that's a different pot. For other, um, ones, those are on hold for two years. Um, and then in the ten year priorities, the county had three that we had elevated. Those were. The design or the engineering and construction for certain segments of the Down Valley Connector Trail. The construction of the Meadows Underpass, uh, near Lawson, um, which was being championed by Mountain Village. And the Ilium intersection improvements, um, C dot staff has recommended that they only move forward with the Ilium intersection improvements. And that would be programmed at approximately six point two eight million dollars of C dot funds. Um, in year six of the ten year plan. So we're still a ways off from seeing that funding on the ground. But that, we know that in our conversations with Mountain Village, they're preparing to construct a phase one. Of around seventy units in Ilium is for their, uh, workforce housing project and. Um, that's just an indication that the intersection will not be ready, um, during that timeframe. So that's a conversation we're going to need to have in the not so distant future.
And Mike, when you say year six of the ten year plan, is that twenty thirty-one or is that twenty thirty-five? Or like, when does the, when is that year that that money would be available?
That's twenty thirty-one.
Twenty thirty-one, okay. And another question, if we needed to move forward with that project sooner than twenty thirty-one. Could we like fund it and get paid back or does it have to happen?
Generally not.
Okay, with real money.
And that would be, uh, if my math is correct, eleven million dollars. Is that correct?
It's.
You said six point two, but I thought that was like, that was a map.
That is a, no, that it's not a fifty fifty.
Okay.
That, um. We're still waiting to get engineers' estimates from Mountain Village on the cost of that intersection. Um, we know that it'll be more than six million, but it won't, it's not anticipated, at least from any conversation I had previously to be at that eleven million level.
Okay.
I think they're, they're estimating in the eight to nine million level.
Okay.
Just say that's in today's dollars.
Correct.
And but the money will be awarded in today's dollars.
That's correct.
In twenty thirty.
So you're correct. By that point, it may be. I should, that, that's an eight million dollar estimate today in six years may end up being on it.
Right. That's impossible to know, but.
Right.
I just don't want somebody in eight years from now to say, wait, it's a twelve million dollar project. I remember Mike Bordenia saying it was, no.
Right.
Thank you.
Um. We met with Maria Stark, um, who was taking over our good times, um, position on the intergovernmental working group. And she is, um, excited to actually take to action some of the ones that we've discussed about organizing tours. From, um, elected leaders to go down to, um, different native. Uh, lands as well as the school in, um. In Tuak.
To yak.
To yak.
To yak.
I can't say.
To yak.
To yak. Um, we also reviewed her budget and, um, we have currently eight thousand dollars in the budget. For our, um, youth reconciliation program, four thousand of which is for the Yutski Day. The other four thousand is more for organizing trips and or bringing folks to the intergovernmental group. That has not been used significantly, um, after Minga Heart from the U, uh, New reservation came. Um, that was less than a thousand dollars of those funds. So those funds will stay in the general fund and roll over. Um, the commissioners have made the four thousand a standing line item in the budget. Um, the four thousand under Yutski Day is more discretionary in the community support funds. Which, uh, those forms have been out, um, for a couple of weeks. We'll be getting those back here at the end of August. And hearing, uh, bringing to you recommendation for which programs, you'll hear recommendations from Parks and Open Space Human Services. And then the portion under the commissioners.
I was thinking about that yesterday when we were at our retreat, talking a little bit about our financial situation. And, um, do you, does the staff have any, um, have, have you had any thoughts or discussions about. Limiting those community grants or do you?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And when you look at the historic amounts that we've given, it has fluctuated with the county's financial position. It has not been a linear or a capped amount in, um, for a multi-year period.
So you'll come to us with a recommended budget and, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Preparing myself.
Yeah, um, Commissioner Waring will be happy to hear that at the Gondola Subcommittee Meeting. Um, they have voted to extend the length of those Gondola Subcommittee Meetings moving forward to two hours from three to five P M. Um, I, I'll be honest, because we're talking so much about station areas that are not in the purview. Of the county, um, I feel as though it's important for us to stay abreast of what's happening, but. Um, largely, we're just listening to these meetings and not ask for our participation or, or recommendations.
How long were the meetings previously?
An hour and a half. So. Can see a lot of excitement there. There's a little, uh. Um, a couple of last things upcoming. Next Tuesday on the twenty-sixth, uh, SMPA is holding their member lunch. Of which we are all members of the Sampa Co-op and, uh, that's up in Mountain Village, their hood at noon.
I'm going to get that on my calendar if possible.
Day one at the conference center, free lunch, uh, and updates from SMPA. I believe it starts at eleven thirty and goes to one. Um, on Monday, this, uh, Monday after that, oh, next Wednesday, um, the following day. We'll be having our special meeting, um, numerous topics on there, including the appointment of the Housing Code Working Group. Strategic Roundtable, hopefully affordable housing updates, uh, the auditor's report for twenty twenty-four. The C cap waitlist and the discussion, um, I'm also going to, uh, just put C cap waitlist, but also discussion with, uh, about primetime. Oh, there it is. Thanks, Carmen. And the continued discussion are valid questions. Then, um, the following Monday, uh, we are closed for Labor Day holiday. And as such, that would have been the SMRHA meeting as, has been, um, brought to light. That will be occurring on September eighth and the time is changed to two P M. To accommodate our lodging tax meeting, which will be also on Monday, September from twelve thirty to one thirty.
Twelve thirty to one thirty. Thank you.
That's all I have for now.
Can you repeat where that S M P A, uh, lunch is? It's at the conference.
Yeah, confirm that. That's what I remember seeing in the invite, but.
Yeah, let us know if you would. Thank you.
Sure thing.
Town of Mountain Village Town Hall upstairs.
Oh, I apologize. Town of Mountain Village Town Hall.
At a lot of.
Very different location.
Eleven o'clock A M, Tuesday, August twentieth.
Eleven.
Eleven.
Okay. And did it say when the end time is anticipated?
It's at one.
One, okay. Good time to lunches that day. All right. Um, anything else?
Not for.
Um, Mike, what, how are you, how long are you out for your?
I'm just out, um.
Thursday, Friday.
I leave at one o'clock tomorrow afternoon and I'll be back on Monday morning.
Okay. Thanks. Um, great. Jared, anything to add?
Nope.
Right.
Nothing, nothing today.
Commissioners, how about an update? Lance looks ready.
She will. Um, Mike reported out on the G V T P R meeting. I also spent a pleasant hour and a quarter of that minutes with Maria Stark. Just getting to know her and her family. She is gonna be great. She is great. And I'm really looking forward to seeing where she takes us. Um. Gondola Subcommittee meeting, I think Mike and I may do a little tag teaming on this in the future. Better use of resources and time. They only want Mike. Thank you. And um, Belina, I know that you attended the SMART meeting and made a report on that. I also checked in with you at the outdoor. I'll let you speak since you were at the meeting.
Great, I'll go. That is the one meeting I have to report on from the last week. Um, Notables is uh the, they're, the SMART Board is considering adopting a financial investment policy. Um. The uh concept was based on the Roaring Fork Transit Authority Policy because uh that's, there's the same state statutes that apply, um and RAFTA has been in the game a long time. Um, so kind of base the proposal off of the, what RAFTA has done with their investment policy. Um, Dylan Brooks was online to kind of uh advise the board on this proposal. Um, just based on his financial advisory uh ex- expertise. Um, and uh similar to what Ramona Rumel presented to us as far as county investment policy, uh it was, it was really in line with what we learned, I learned for the first time as far, um as far as that investment policy based on state statutes of what you can do with a, within that kind of a authority and how you can invest. Um. And it, no, no decisions were made. It was just um presented to the board as a concept and folks gave feedback. Um, most of which was really uh just supported, uh everyone pretty much unanimously supported what was presented based on the RAFTA model, um but discussions will continue moving forward. Um, but the idea is to just um make good prudent investments with um with smart funds and to be able to get some return on investment and um make good fiscal choices. Um. They talked about a twenty twenty five budget amendment um as a placeholder for grant funding that has been rescinded recently, so some kind of last minute shuffle there. Um, and then looking forward into twenty twenty six budget, um it was recommended by David to take a conservative approach rolling into twenty twenty six with all of many factors, um one including the um what we've been discussing today with the five point two five percent tax um cap, property tax cap, um and also reduction in sales tax by approximately three percent. And then looking at lodging tax being flat or down maybe two percent in the coming year. Um, nothing really notable as far as performance and operations other than a route expansion coming in September. Um. For the, the s- Down Valley Line will be going clear to Norwood um for their evening six thirty route and then also starting um at six twenty five in the morning. Uh, so a route expansion to Norwood starting in September, which should be great for those who want to stay in town, grab a dinner or have extended work hours. Um, that was everything notable.
Thanks so much for serving in your alternate role.
Yeah.
That's good information.
Yeah, it was great.
Anything else that was that?
I hope that was clear. Uh, if you have questions, please.
Very clear.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, I just have a couple of things. Um, last night I attended their Tyra and Medical Center Band-Aids and Barbecue. Their sort of annual community dinner. And we were addressed by Paul Reich, the Chair of the Medical Hospital District Board, Jeff Roberts, the C E O, as well as members of the Tyra Hospital District Foundation. And they let us know, and I confirmed this this morning with our Planning Director Kay Simonsen, that Genesee has um now provided a um all submitted their materials for the final P U D approval. Has not been reviewed by the county yet, so I cannot confirm and it will be a while before we understand whether it's complete. But as far as um Genesee um is concerned, they've given us what they think we need. That's really exciting for the medical center because um should this board um choose to approve that final P U D, the Genesee is poised to basically turn over over two acres of land out on that parcel to the hospital and they can get going with their development out there. Um, the current estimate of the cost of the new facility is eighty million dollars. They are starting their fundraising, they have already. Um, I explicitly asked if they plan to raise the mill levy in any way in order to provide for that new facility and they said they are making every effort to work within their current mill levy rate. So that was pretty exciting. That was the first time I'd been to any meeting where the hospital district seemed to really believe that they were gonna receive that parcel and be able to build on it. So very exciting. Um, just a reminder that our state legislature moves into special session tomorrow. It's planned for three days. Um, and that is primarily to address the revenue shortfall that is hitting the state because of changes in federal tax policy that were um put into place by the one bad beautiful bill. Uh, so that will be interesting to keep an eye on what's happening there. And then just want to let you know, Friday I will be attending the C C I Western District Meeting in Delta. So I will report back on that next week. That's it from me. I think it's lunchtime. What do you all think? And I realized we never took a break. Is everybody okay?
I'm hanging.
I apologize. It just didn't come up.
Let's recess for lunch and come back at one o'clock.
That sounds perfect. Thank you, Lance. I mean, I am not sufficiently hydrated.
Do we want to rearrange the room now or closer to one?
Uh, let's do it closer to ones.
Like I'm in high school pep band, I guess.
Yeah. Would you play it?
Oh, yeah. I played the.
Doesn't it look like a player?
Yeah.
Well. That's.
I've seen, I've seen the music in you.
I played the drums. I was in a band in high school and you'll never find my album.
Need this.
Never.
Oh, I love that. That is horrible.
There was, and that did not end up on. I know three people who have a copying.
The rest of.
Does not include my watch.
Kind of.
Good afternoon, San Diego County. It is one P M. On Wednesday, August twentieth. This is a continuation of the Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting. We have arrived right on time to item number thirteen. County housing matters. This is a continued discussion of deed restriction and potential reversion options for county deed restricted properties and consideration of Chair's signature on Resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty three regarding correction and reversion of affordable housing deed restrictions and covenants. Couple things to cover here. The first is that conflict disclosure statement. The following agenda item will involve discussion of deed restricted properties within San Diego County and the operation of certain covenants and restrictions. In the interest of transparency and to address any perceived conflict of interest, I would like to disclose on the record that I am an owner of deed restricted property within San Diego County and have entered into a covenant with the county for that property. I do not believe this will impact my ability to remain fair and impartial for purposes of today's discussion. I would also like to state that because of that relationship or that situation, I am comfortable recusing myself or excusing myself from any option that might be offered in terms of aversion from my property.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes, sir.
Um, in past conversations, I've been able to join you. However, in this instance, after opposition with my wife, I am not able to make the same statement and have to recuse myself from this conversation.
I understand Lance. I appreciate that you are making that decision and thank you for all that you've offered to this discussion up until now.
I'll be listening.
Okay. With that, we are left with Commissioner Lee, Senator Brown, staff and members of the public, both online and in the room. I just wanted to review how we intend to handle this afternoon. As in the past, we will have a presentation by staff. During that presentation, and in particular afterwards, there will be questions and answers and discussion among the staff and and the commissioners. Following that, we will move into a public comment. And as we've done in the past, we will have two rounds. Oops, I'm getting a. We love two rounds of public comment. Last time, do we have them four minutes, not three minutes? Is that right? Are we stuck with three minutes?
We did three. I think there was a prior circumstance where we allowed somebody to go over, so we upped.
Then we had to.
To far.
Okay.
But I think if we start with the three, we can adjust.
Yeah, let's try, let's stick with the three. And then after the first round of public comment, we will pause and respond to anything that we are able to at the time. We will then have a second round of public comment so that we, and then a follow, a following response. The commissioners and staff have a hard stop at three P M. So if we are not able to conclude the discussion and provide direction by three or little before three P M., we will have to continue the discussion to another meeting. It's possible that we will also have to continue the last item on the agenda to a future meeting, but again, we'll see how, or how timing goes. But again, this is I think the first time I've ever been commissioned, that we do have a hard stop at three and we are gonna have to abide by that. Any questions or comments about the kind of approach? No? Okay.
So if Lance recues themselves and you guys take a vote, how does that work? Is it a unanimous vote or is it a deadening?
Yes, it would have to be unanimous or else it might be, we wouldn't be moving forward. On, yeah, it would, yeah. Okay, I think we're ready to hear it from staff. Hear from staff.
Thank you, commissioners. As we have been going through this process, Mara and I have been working back and forth, working with Pam, Mike, everybody else, and you know, I would be remiss if I didn't extend my appreciation to our whole team, including Nancy for all of her research, Pam for being a continual resource through this process and her new knowledge to this whole thing. You know, it's, it's been a journey for all of us and it has really been a great team effort, so I want to acknowledge that. So this is our continued discussion from our, originally our July sixteenth meeting, and then we had another session on the twenty third of July. And we will walk through where we're at today, what our suggestions are, how we have crafted Resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty three at the direction of the commissioners and then leave it open for any of your questions, so. And with that, we will get started and I would ask, Mara, please interrupt wherever you see fit. So. So again, just the agenda for today. Again, read overview of the deed restriction purpose. A quick overview of how we got here between the July sixteenth and the July twenty third meeting. A review of the draft resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty three, what was in the previous version. We'll talk about the amendments made there too. An outline of what we are suggesting for outreach efforts to come. And finally, the staff recommendation. And as we have had a common theme through all of these meetings, we, we want to take commissioner questions at the end of the presentation, ideally. Of course, it's at your discretion. And with each deed restriction, they are all so, if we haven't learned it yet, they're all so individual and they can all have minor changes and differences, so it is incumbent that when we're talking about a deed restriction, we cannot go to our neighbor's house and say, you and I are in the same boat, because that is not necessarily the case. So we, we just caution everybody to read their own and hope that maybe a few people, I believe a few people have done that through this process and hopefully are are more aware of, you know, their own restrictions, so. So the deed restriction purpose, as I have outlined in a few presentations, you know, this is section five dash thirteen oh five. This has existed throughout the inception of the program, really in nineteen ninety one and ongoing, so. The, the guidelines, rules and regulations are intended to help preserve sufficient supply of affordable housing to meet the needs of locally employed residents in the Telluride Arwin School District while allowing customary free market or unrestricted practices to influence sale and rental of affordable housing as much as possible. And again, I, I like to come back to this because it is, while we always get into the weeds of what does it mean to any one person, we are also trying to make policy that keeps that broader view in mind as well. And that's the balance that you are all trying to strike, so. The previous meeting overview. So again, we, we originally brought some of these things on June eighteenth, had the discussion on July sixteenth with a presentation. Another one on the twenty third, which I was remote. And now here we are today and Mara is remote, so we are all trading places in some of these respects. And so we've been having this conversation for a while and continuing to workshop and work on how we want to implement this. Based on the updated legal guidance we received, the primary issue that was expressed was that options were not given to individuals when they purchased deed restricted property and that, quote, individuals were forced onto a covenant. And so that's, that's what we've heard. And obviously, we've heard other nuance. And I have the other kind of themes that, when I look back into my notes, you know, these are the themes of the questions and issues that have been persistent through all of this process, so confusion about timeline and we're trying to be clear about that. A desire to return to the land use code, kind of flat out. Questions about how initial qualification and continuing qualification have and will continue to persist. How the compliance process worked and how it will work with these changes and a number of technical questions that have arisen over the time. And, and to that point, we, we have continued to divide this into what applies to the deed restriction and what is the county housing authority trying to resolve here? And then we know that there is going to be the other half of this conversation with S M R H A board, with the upcoming compliance process. And we, we have worked and, and again, I have a lot of appreciation for Pam Schifrin because she is committed to do whatever she needs to do to educate, to let people know. We've been game planning how to send letters and how to make form letters and those kind of things. And it's really a matter of, we want to hammer down these deed restriction issues. That way we can move from that point forward. So the draft resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty three that was presented at the meeting on July twenty third included. It, it included options for, and we've broken into a few buckets of individuals or individual deed restrictions. So for those transfers since June first, twenty twenty two, those within what we're calling the three-year time period. We were suggesting that they would receive the option to stay on the current deed restriction. The option to revert to the previous owner's deed restriction with no preconditions on that. And the option to revert to the twenty ten covenant. Similarly, we discussed at that meeting that properties on any other form of covenant would have the option and outside of that three-year time window would be given an option to stay on the current deed restriction where they're at or an option to revert to the twenty ten covenant. We did have some conversation at the last meeting that particularly part eleven was problematic for some declarations, I think specifically in Lawson Hill, and was one of the reasons that that was removed in the twenty sixteen version, and we may talk a little bit more about that in a moment as well. But we have redrafted that to the version that is in the current packet. And we've included some suggested amendments and we'll be running over those here in a moment. But any questions thus far? Just to put a finer point on things, I just wanted to go through what the scenarios would be using the numbers that we, as we understand them today. So the total number of county deed restricted properties is three hundred and forty nine, and you see a pretty even split between each type of deed restriction that applies. So thirty one percent are on a land use code. Thirty four percent are on a version of the covenant. And then thirty five percent are on a special covenant. And when I say that, as we have discussed previously, that is the the Rio Vista, an exception agreement, the Pinion Park. The Rio Vista, an exception agreement, uh the Pinion Park uh covenant, those. Kinds of covenants that are special and specific to certain developments. So just to again, start with the universe of deed restrictions that are out there. So next, we are talking about what we have put into the redrafted um. Resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty three that's in the packet. Um, and we're gonna start with for those who are who are on within that three year window. So again, that three year window, we're even though we are past June first, obviously. We we want to respect that June first date that we've been saying continually since the onset of this process. So um all properties that have transferred ownership from June first twenty twenty two. To the date this resolution is enacted would be given an option to continue on their current deed restriction. Um, so not change, uh revert to the restriction of the previous owner if it is different. Or revert to the twenty sixteen version of the covenant and and here I want to point out. Um. Thanks to Mara, she did some research and feel free to chime in here, Mara, but when we reviewed that section eleven. That was problematic, um. There is are no substantive differences with with the exception of the removal of section eleven. From the twenty ten and the twenty sixteen covenant, it was that twenty sixteen covenant was really designed to resolve. Uh, that impasse between those declarations and uh the covenant as it existed. Um, and so that's why we are suggesting that the twenty sixteen version of the covenant be an option instead of the twenty ten. Any anything to add there, Mara?
Nope, you got it.
Maybe just a thanks to Ginny Gordon for calling all that to our attention.
Undoubtedly, it's been it's taken the proverbial village, so.
Yeah, it's taken the proverbial.
Um, so just one point here that that offer would be provided to a current owner of property. And um, you know, there've been a lot of conversations about prospective buyers wanting to exercise this option. I think it is fine if a prospective buyer wants to. Try to convince a current owner to take a particular option that would be advantageous of to them, but we. We can't really entertain and I know uh Pam Schifrin has been kind of navigating this uh as carefully as she could. Um, but this offer would be for the current owner um and be able to move ahead. To those owners, it it can't be to a prospective buyer, um, so.
Can you clarify on those who are in process or under contract potentially?
So if they are.
That are falling in that bucket.
I I think the assumption we have had is if then if there's anybody under contract, we would dissect those, those would be the first ones we try to deal with. Because we know they are probably the uh the ones that are closest that are gonna need the full paperwork. And so we would go through and if if we aren't gonna make the closing date, we would make the offer to the new owner. Um, but if we're able to get it before the closing date, we would ask the current owner what their preference is. And obviously, in that scenario, they would probably need to discuss with their uh prospective buyer. What if there are preferences or if there's not, so.
Sense.
Any questions about? So that's that's the offer that would be made to those within the three year window, so just.
And Jared, what do you have there on the right seventeen covenant covenant fifteen covenant to land use code?
Yeah, so this this encompasses a total of thirty two properties currently. Again, there may be some in some transition with. Um, closing dates and those kind of things. Um. Seventeen of those would be uh are on a covenant and would go if they revert to a previous owner's covenant to a covenant. Uh, fifteen of those would go from a current covenant to a version of the land use code. And as we've discussed, you know, we we don't uh we don't believe we should put any preconditions on that, those land use code scenarios. Um, as that has been kind of an ongoing theme that these are the the folks that we feel. Have the biggest or or the best case to say, we didn't understand, we didn't get, we weren't made an offer, so on and so forth, so.
That's clear, thank you.
So the second group are properties on a covenant deed restriction that were transferred prior to June first twenty twenty two. Um, to to your point, Commissioner Brown, those are eighty five total properties. Twelve of those, if they were to revert to the previous um deed restriction, twelve would go from a covenant to another version of a covenant. Seventy three would go from a covenant to a version of the land use code. And so what we have drafted in the resolution is that one option is to continue on their current deed restriction. Second is to revert to the deed restriction of the previous owner if it's different from the current. Uh, with a caveat that if they went to a land use code deed restriction. Um, they would agree to use the language that is identified in the covenant for. Definitely defining an employee, defining non qualifying income and defining qualifying income. And so that that was some of the discussion we had, I think, at the last two meetings is. Is this legal? How could we do it? And I think we have figured out a way where we could. Um, and that is what we are proposing for those folks um who would revert to a land use code version. Um, so it would be a land use code version with um this additional supplement.
And are you going to get input on a pre uh subsequent slide about why? We have added that or you are suggesting that additional language? Or is it the time to just to kind of remind ourselves why that isn't the suggestion?
I I suppose now would be the time. I have not prepared any.
Sure.
Supplemental information, but largely it is because the the definition of employee um and. Maybe even the lack of definition of employee, non qualifying and qualifying income is one of the biggest challenges we have with the land use code. Um, is that that there are is a lot of room for interpretation and uh it is. Uh, a challenge to um really. Make sure that folks are complying with kind of not only the the word or the uh the text, but also the spirit of that law and. I would ask Mara if she has additional, because I know we did have some conversations with Lane Thomason about this, um, and.
Also spoke with the planning director at the time who drafted this language. Um, in nine in the early nineties and he shared that. When they wrote it, they intended for that employee definition to be the household, even though it was interpreted differently as time went on.
And also uh the that it would include um income primarily earned in the.
Correct.
In the region.
Yes, yeah.
I'll just add add to that, so just as a refresher, um, our prior. Uh, draft of the resolution did not include any recommendation that. The properties in this category would go back to the land use code that was limited to. Either staying on their current deed restriction or going to the twenty ten covenant at the time. And so we added this in based on. Feedback from the public and I think interest from the commissioners in seeing another alternative included for this. Um, class of property owners. Um, and I do just want to note that. We tried, I I used the language from the covenant as much as possible um to. Capture the the clarity that's provided in the covenant for these definitions. Um, but also trying to stay as close to the land use code terminology as possible, so this is a little bit of a. Combination of those two uh sets of language because the covenant does include a lot of new terminology and definitions that are not in the land use code. Um, so I had to kind of craft these definitions to. Align with the standards that are in the covenant, but to still use some of the language. In the land use code, so we didn't have to essentially incorporate all of the definitions that exist in the covenant.
Thank you. And one thing I noticed in the resolution was that, and I think this is appropriate, that we stayed with the original. Um, hours requirement of that land use code. It wasn't like we were trying to bring people up to the twenty three covenant length definitions. It was really the twenty ten that we were trying to capture here.
Right.
It is it is notable that every person in the deed restricted program today would. Be given an option to be on the, you know, one thousand thirty two hour limit um. By one of these uh permutations or the other, so. So we we are effectively, um, if everybody elects to revert. To something other than the twenty twenty three land or covenant version, um, that that additional um. One thousand two hundred hour requirement would not actually apply to anybody.
Ten, so, okay. Thanks.
So the the last item would be, we we did add in to here the same option. For folks to revert to the twenty sixteen version of the covenant as well. Um, if that was preferable um for clarity sake, um. Any questions on that?
For me?
It is our it's our hope that that kind of allows folks the option to revert, but also. Does not allow that household income concept to um. Not be addressed, so.
I think this was a suggestion from the member of the public that he could actually add a rider like this, so. Thank you for being responsive to that.
So the last group um that we would be looking at are properties on a land use code deed restriction currently. Or a specific covenant, so uh there's a hundred and ten of those on the land use code currently and a hundred and twenty two special covenants. And the owners on a land use code version currently would be given an option to either remain on that land use code. Or uh we wanted to allow them an option to convert to the twenty sixteen version of the covenant as we've allowed the other two groups. Um. Finally, any owner on a specific covenant uh would not be given any sort of option to change because those specific covenants are. Project specific and um. We we don't have latitude because of the funding resources we used to or that were used to build them or otherwise to change those.
Makes sense.
So I have kind of just put all of those options on a table. Um, and just for sake of argument, from left to right. It is the group of folks that have had transferred property since June first twenty twenty five. Um, those on a covenant uh who transferred property before June first twenty twenty two, those on a land use code. And then those on a specific covenant with the options that are ostensibly in that resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty three.
That's really helpful. Thanks.
And I'll pause here if you guys cook up any questions. If not. We'll talk a little bit about what our pers- you know, our perspective plan is to. Proceed uh if this were decided by the commissioners. Um. We've we've tried to outline the process uh of a timeline now. This obviously is malleable, will still have to work through a number of issues uh and items. But if uh we got final board action. Uh, today or sometime, you know, our our target is still to get notices to owners. On or around September fifteenth of twenty twenty five. Um. The reversion option, we would ask for responses to be due back. We we continue to use sixty days. Um, we heard that that's too short. Uh, other folks said, you know, that's plenty of time. We've got a mix of responses. And so we left that and you know, if the commissioners would like to change that, we're happy to oblige, but. That that is an administrative item that we're willing to negotiate and and deal with as we keep moving. But I put it in there at sixty days, so if we gave notices on September fifteenth, that would mean responses would be due back by November, you know, fourteenth. Um, and then we could theoretically start our compliance process. Knowing who we're trying to revert, who we're not, so on and so forth. Um, somewhere around the week of November nineteenth. And we would have that compliance process completed somewhere in mid December. So um, that's that's probably an optimistic time window, but I wanted to at least put some dates so you can see. How uh timing may impact uh how we would proceed, so.
If we um extended that sixty days to ninety days, because I thought we heard pretty consistently last time, I mean. Yeah, that that sixty days felt tight for people, particularly since, well, let's see. Actually, it wouldn't be all over the off season, but anyway, if we did extend that to ninety days, um, would it? Harm us or the community in any way other than just. Having that end date be in January or maybe February because of the holidays or like, do we have concerns about that?
I I think we we just push compliance and and again, we we discussed pushing compliance at the last meeting. And I think that's that's doable, but we would then be starting compliance in December, so we may want to consider how we would deal with that. Um, if we would want to wait on compliance and again, these are administrative items that we can manage as we move ahead.
Okay.
But.
No implications for the resolution?
No.
Okay.
Thanks, that, yeah.
So during that time, um, we we would be reaching out, um, you know, I've already begun conversations with Pam Schifrin about. Education about the compliance process as well as education about these reversion methods or the reversion options. Um, we would kind of begin a campaign of education during that time, you know, from whenever this. Uh, is passed, the uh resolution is passed until we get. To kind of the end, right? I think that would be something where we've discussed. Uh, having some public engagement sessions, engaging the HOAs in their offers to, you know, facilitate some of that education as well. And further just make sure that we are available to be resources as much as possible without giving legal advice. Um, to those people who would be considering these reversions or not. Um, and during that time, we'll also be working on educating folks on the coming compliance process. Which will also be something, you know, uh, it's been two years, it may be a little bit more than two years by the time we actually get to it, so we want to make sure that. It's um not a surprise and that that process is clearly understood at the same time and. Uh, I think that's a focus of S M R H A and something that um education is something that Pam has really kind of uh. Taken uh to heart as something she values and wants to really push forward with S M R H A, so.
Great, and compliance would not take place, I think you said this earlier, until we review that whole process and all of our policies, correct?
Correct, we would we would be walking through what compliance currently looks like.
Yeah.
With S M R H A and discussing if there are amendments that are necessary to that process.
Um, how do you feel about the commissioners as the county housing authority also having some um? Some input on that oversight or is that just an S M R H A decision?
Well, Commissioner Waring is a board member, as am I, so if you give us that direction, of course, we'll convey that.
Okay.
And yes, you'll have input already.
Yeah.
And and I think that in addition to that, I I believe we would be willing to bring that presentation to. The county commissioners meeting as well, sitting as the county housing authority.
And and just as a side note, as it pertains to the town in Telluride or the county's compliance uh processes. Um, S M R H A is deferential to those board members that represent those jurisdictions. It's not as though Telluride. Or our one at large member dictating what the county or county process will be.
Do you have a thought on that, Lika?
Oh, I mean, I think it's an important part, though, a little like. Separate from what we're looking at today, that it's it's been top of mind for me and I think it's really important. I think having that presentation given to the B O C. I think having that presentation given to the B O C C would be really useful, just to get it in front of all of our eyes verbatim. And, you know, I feel comfortable passing on any guidance or thoughts I have to Mike and Lance as representatives on that board.
I do as well. I, well, I think I, I would definitely like for all commissioners to be involved. I absolutely trust you two, but I think we've heard as many, if not more complaints about the compliance process as we did about the use, you know, the way the covenants and so forth have been treated. So I feel like it has reached, it, it reached a level where as the county housing authority, I would like for us to, to be participate in that. Makes sense probably for you guys to come forth with recommendations, like that's why you're on that board, but I would like to have the, the full B O C C approve whatever changes are made, if that's okay.
We'll definitely convey that.
Thanks. Okay.
So the, the rest of this just kind of details. Again, we would work to stand up a website on SMRHA's webpage to make sure all of this information is in a, you know, single location. People would have access to that, would have access to as many of these resources as possible that we've been developing, these presentations, so on and so forth, to see, you know, this has been a process to get here and giving people the opportunity to make sure they, they can go to one place and see how this all unfolded, so. So finally, just, your standing staff recommendation has been to particularly address those within the three-year window, as those were the folks in this scenario where we really heard a lot of complaints about not receiving an offer. We heard complaints about, you know, how those offers were or were not made. We, we know that there was a, a little bit of an increased stress on compliance process. And frankly, it's in the statute of limitations. So those are the reasons we have continued to say this is the group we feel we need to address the most. Not to say that anybody else is discounted, but our staff recommendation is to proceed with that as soon as is practical. That way we can get started with, because as the clock continues to run, we just continue to collect questions at SMRJ about new owners and new opportunities for ownership that are happening. To note that there are some folks who, these options won't be significantly different, right? And they may find that the option isn't really worth the squeeze, so to speak. And, and we know that just in our research, we have found that some of the language changes, for example, between the twenty-ten and the twenty-sixteen, it was really removal of a section. And other than that, it, it didn't change in any substantive other way. So we, we understand that these offers of reversion may be a little unsatisfying, but they, we wanted to make sure that everybody was heard, everybody got options. And they were ones that can achieve the goal of the program. So we, we continue to recommend that we move ahead. The resolution is written in a way where if passed today, we can proceed. Again, prioritizing those who are currently in process of a property transfer. And then otherwise letting everybody know and really getting this process on the road, because it's going to take some time. And I'm under no, you know, illusions that we might bump our heads along this process as well, so.
Is that your last slide?
That is.
All right. Thank you. I was unable to hold my questions back till the end, so I have saved my comments and questions. So, Lina, you might have showed more restraint.
You, you asked some great questions there along the way, but I think or it was appropriate, I thought. I, for those who maybe haven't, so I guess I'll back up. In the previous meeting, there was suggestion from a couple of members of the public about potentially infusing the non-qualifying income and qualifying income disclosure into the land use code to kind of address some of those concerns. And then also the definition of employee has been added in there. And I think it's prudent to kind of divulge that to the public at this point, just what that definition of employee is. I see most of the people in the room have been at all of these meetings and are quite educated, but I just want to, for like transparency reasons and public understanding, I think it's important to just define that, because that is one other like pretty it, it, it would be a shift in that land use code reversion option for anybody post-June first, twenty-twenty-two, that might, if we settle on something, might have that option. So the definition of, I'm just, this is less of a question, more of a statement, but I just feel kind of obligated to read this. And, and this is from the resolution. And that, that definition of employee shall mean a person who has maintained his or her primary and sole residence within San Miguel County for at least eight of the preceding twelve months, has earned qualifying income for at least one thousand thirty-two hours of the twelve months prior to the date of the housing authority. Prior to the date, the housing authority receives his or her certification of eligibility to occupy affordable housing and is currently earning qualifying income. And for the particular eight to twelve months that established the employee's residency under Part A above, the employees, how, the employee's household non-qualifying income calculated during that period does not exceed the employee's household qualifying income. A person not otherwise meeting the definition of employee may be qualified as an employee by the housing authority or its designate is that person, if that person is more than sixty years of age and for at least five of the preceding eight years, the person A has maintained his or her primary and sole residence in San Miguel County for at least eight months of each applicable year, was earning qualifying income for at least one thousand thirty-two hours of each applicable year. And for each applicable year, the person's household non-qualifying income did not exceed the person's household qualifying income. I just think that's a pretty important point and wanted to just elaborate on that for the public before we go into public comments.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. I think we're ready for all the comments. And I know we had talked about shifting things around, and I'm sorry, it just doesn't feel right.
No, I thought we said we chose not to because we didn't get a lot of crap.
Yeah, I think that works better for me. So, okay, we are going to move into public comment. And as I said earlier, we'll have two rounds. We'll have a three-minute timer and then we'll keep track of questions and comments, respond to those as we can, and then have a second round of public comment. Laura, I think you missed the fact that we have a hard stop at three. So if we don't conclude this part of the meeting by three, we'll continue to the next meeting. But yeah, I think that's it. And I will also clarify, Lee had asked a question. Lance has accused himself because he has a conflict of interest. And so in order to pass this resolution, we will need two votes. If Commissioner Lee said I disagree, then nothing happens today. So. All right, let's alternate as we have between in the room and online. Would someone in the room like to go first? Yes. Wait a second, one second. If you please come up on to the microphone, just because that way everybody on Zoom can hear you and introduce yourself, first and last name, any kind of affiliation that you have. And yeah, that'd be helpful.
My name's Brettley Danner and I've lived in Lawson since two thousand and five. I don't really understand all your language, but I know we had a vote if we wanted to be part of the county. We said no. I know that we were offered to change, you know, to the town deed restriction is the way I'm seeing it. And first of all, I'm wondering why we would want to? And is that what you're trying to do, is change our deed restriction? Because I find that very illegal.
Okay, we will, we're just going to take all public comment and then we will respond to that.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, anybody online? Shelley, do plan. Hi, Shelley. You're up. Looks like we're allowing Shelley to unmute. Takes a sec. Working on it. You're good. And feel free to turn on your video if you'd like as well.
Okay, there I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we've been on a long journey, haven't we? And it's really been a lot of work. And I, you know, want to express again my appreciation for all of the work that the county has done, all the work that a lot of us in the public have done. And, and I, I think we're, in my opinion, at this point, at a good place. And I would support the current resolution as proposed today. And I think it fairly offers the options to the deed restricted owners based on the, all of the sort of concerns that have been raised thus far. I would say that I would suggest a ninety-day response period rather than a sixty-day. I, I think a ninety-day would be more appropriate to give people adequate opportunity to review their, their available options. I strongly disagree with the staff recommendation just based on the large amount of evidence at this point of what has occurred over the years of mandating, you know, new owners to sign on to more restrictive covenants, I, 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 under duress. I think that, you know, only limiting those options to the three years is a mistake. And then I, and then I have a question in the process of notification. In the notice letters that you're going to be sending out to deed, deed restricted owners is, will you be specifying in those letters on an individual basis? What each property or how each property is covered? So for example, you know, a letter goes to John Smith at the particular address and you notifying them that you are covered under either a particular year of the covenant or a particular land use code year. So that they don't have to then go back and try to figure out where they're covered or which agreement they're covered under, because that'll save them some steps and some time so that they know, you know, which agreement they're covered under. I think that would be helpful to be specific with each individual property. And so that would be my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. And I think that's a good point for us to discuss after we get through this round of public comment. Who's next in the room? Sir, come on up.
I know you missed me. My name is Lee Ruffa. I'm a resident in Altesoro. And I just had some questions and some clarification points. This has been a long process for everybody. As much as I hate to say this, the county commissioners Lance and Anne should be given the option because it's a financial impact on you as well. And just because you're helping make decisions in this whole thing, you shouldn't be penalized for that. You guys have basically walked the middle line. You've listened to people and you're helping make decisions. So that's that part. Second thing in terms of clarification for Jared, number one, he keeps referring to the land use code. According to Maura, the land use code is based on, not that they're different land use codes, but it was when that property was conceived, when that property was platted. And I forgot the terms you used, Jared, but particular to that property, it's more along when the property was platted. At the last meeting, Maura and I were talking about platted or purchased. And she said, well, no, it's about the same. I said, no, platted is platted, purchase is purchased. So if you're going to refer to the land use code, it should be for that specific subdivision. And when it was brought in, that is the accurate term. Third thing, Jared, you also brought up, you found a quote workaround on how to modify the plat to include the additional language for employee, non-employee, if someone chooses to go to the land use code. At the meeting two or three times ago, Maura specifically came out. You guys had three or four legal councils review it, and you said you can't change your plat. And that's why the land use code is not changeable and why it's moving forward. So I guess the question I'm asking you, what is the quote workaround? I think those were your exact words, if you replay your tape. And trying to come up with the new language that would be added to the land use code, if somebody chooses to go that way. And I agree with Shelley part of the way. You guys have come a long way, and I think we're about halfway there. I'm still stuck on the fact of you still keep trying to change the land use code to fit your guys' needs, not the individual who bought the property, who had the land use code stamped on their plat. You still keep trying it. When I was going through my affordable housing review, you guys were always trying to change it. You were always trying to come up with something different. You were always trying to, what I call twist it to benefit you. You're right, you're probably going to lose a couple of houses. But in the end, you still gotta do what's right by the people. That's all.
Thanks. Anybody else online? Matthew Lego, take it away.
Hi, so I did some looking into the language that they were providing for the definitions of the land use code. And they, it looks like the definitions that were being used are the definitions in section one, but the continuing employment standard definitions are in five-point-two-point-two, which are significantly different from the definitions that were proposed. So I just wanted to point that out. It looks like you're, you're using the wrong definitions there.
I'm unclear what you were saying, Matthew. Can you slow down and just do that one step at a time?
Okay, so the definitions that they proposed for the land use code for the continuing employment standard.
So the, within the resolution on page four, those two pieces, yeah?
So it look, it looks like they pulled those definitions from the purchase definition, which is different from the continuing employment definition. So there's a definition for when you purchase a property, you must meet certain requirements. And then there's a different definition for continuing to own the property. And it looks like you're using the purchase language, which is more restrictive than the continuing language, which is less restrictive. If that makes sense?
It does now to me.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Nope, he's on mute. Okay, best person in the room?
Jake McTeague, Aldisoro Property Owner. My first question and needing some clarity is, so people that purchased from two thousand ten to two thousand sixteen, how is the option that has been presented for owners who purchased between this time, if they do choose to go to the L U C, any different? It reads the exact same to me.
Okay, sorry, say that one more time.
For the individuals that
Twenty-ten and twenty-sixteen.
Right, so the people that purchased during that time, that would be, that are currently on the two thousand ten covenant or amendment. And they are given the option to move to the L U C with certain conditions. Those conditions read the exact same as the two thousand ten covenant. So essentially, nothing's being offered in my review. So if you guys could clarify that, like, what would be the actual difference? And then in your proposed resolution on page two at the top, it says removal of section eleven of the two thousand ten covenant rights concerning the exercise of option and purchase. I've gone to section eleven and I cannot find that, so that would need to be specified. Additionally, this has come up before under section one point four of administration and enforcement. I think there needs to be some sort of reciprocal language in there where it talks about, you know, if the property owner is in violation. I think we also need to have protection for the property owners. So if there is an action that has been taken before by previous administrators for the county here, that the property owner has an enforceable action against the county.
And that is that on page five, Jake?
I'm Reed. I'm just referencing section one point four, administration enforcement in my two thousand and ten. Um, I'm read, I'm just referencing section one point four administration enforcement in my two thousand and ten. I don't know where that would be-
Your covenant.
My covenant, so I don't know where that is on same place, one point four. Yeah, so it's the same place. That'd be on three of twenty-five of the exhibits. Final comment for right now. I just think, right, to come to a resolution today would be rushing the process. I understand that there's some closings, but to simply get to closing at this time, uh, would not be fair and equitable.
Anybody else online? Anybody else in the room? Jenny?
I do to everyone's thanks. Jenny Gordon, um, Lawson Hill Property Owner. I do to everyone's thanks for, gosh. We're all getting tired of this. You all have other things that you need to focus on. So thanks for hanging in there and thanks for everybody here for trying to understand this. Um, I just wanted to say that I did do the comparison of the twenty sixteen versus my version of the twenty ten covenant. And I would agree, I found a couple of just minor, minor, minor word changes in those two documents. So I think we're fine to use the twenty sixteen. I don't, and I'm not speaking as an attorney representing anyone else, but I, I think we're, I think that that's just fine. Um, the, uh, price cap language was removed and I think that's really the main thing that we were trying to do. The, there still is a definition of the price cap, um, language in, in these, in the, in this document, the twenty sixteen. And I think it has to be in there because in eleven point three four, there's a price cap definition. And I had asked that we just remove that. Um, but it's in there, I think because of one point eight, which says the county will not enter into an agreement that imposes capital P, price, capital A appreciation, cap- capital C cap. So I think they had to include that in there and that was just a question of, that's why it got left in there. Okay, great. I think the idea of offering somebody a reversion to an LUC under the conditions that you write here is really not giving them the benefit of reversion to the LUC. It's really putting in covenant language and it isn't giving them the benefit of some of the other covenant language that, um, does more define things like, um, leaves of absence and unemployment and things of that nature. So I'm not sure that this is really beneficial. I, I would suggest either you let people, certain people revert to the original LUC or, or don't, but this is, is language that complicates what they're doing. I would assume that this is a side agreement. You're not suggesting changing the original LUC, I don't believe. You're just suggesting a side agreement that this language would apply to someone who wanted to revert. Um, to my way of looking at it, and I haven't compared the LUC exactly with this, blah, 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 blah. But I, I think it's just, it's just muddying the waters in, in my opinion. Um, either let people revert to an LUC and give them the advantage of the vagaries that are in there, both good and bad for them. Um, or, or don't let them revert, but I haven't had the chance to really do a deep dive on the LUC versus this, but it, it does seem like you, you're adding one more complexity of somebody who's under the LUC, but they're not, and they've got these special provisions. And my whole idea on all of this was to drive, try to get it.
Thank you, Jenny. You should have been a lawyer. Okay, anybody else online? I don't see that. Anybody else in the room? Lara? Hello?
Um, I agree with-
Of just maybe your full name?
Oh, Lara Young. Hi, I agree with Lee that if you're a deed restricted owner, you should, you and Lance should fall under whatever ends up happening here. So in a nutshell, you have a community of local deed restricted owners, half of whom are on the LUC for various reasons. Did not sign or were involved in the covenant that Jenny worked on. Um, and half who over the past thirty ye- years, I see it, have been driven to develop and sign covenant, covenants out of fear that the county was attempting to strip them of their property rights. Which the county was indeed trying to do, not the people sitting here today, but that's what's happened in the last thirty-five years since I've been here. The twenty ten covenant was driven by homeowners because the county was continually making amendments, which were threatening. And we now know these amendments could not affect the property owners at the time who were their plat- that were platted under the original LUC. We now know despite the county attorney at the time telling homeowners like Lee Ruffa and Jenny Gordon that their properties were not attached to the original LUC and these amendments and changes applied to them. We now know this to be, that it's false and their property rights could not and were not threatened, could not be and were not threatened, and the county could not legally erode their property rights at the time and cannot now if you are ta- attached and your property is platted under the LUC. So in reality, homeowners like Jenny Gordon did not need to protect their rights, spending countless hours working with the county on a covenant to protect themselves. Nefarious acts by the county attorneys over the years, misleading and forcing homeowners to sign covenants. And now this board, this staff and this attorney have an opportunity to right the wrongs of the past. Instead, I feel like this is an offer from the godfather. Like Jake said, it feels like a shell game, not really an offer or an option in good faith. You're not accomplishing anything other than deeply dividing the deed restricted community, the hundred plus of us who are on the LUC and the hundred who over the years were convinced that their rights were being taken are forced to sign a covenant. Um, I find this continued manipulation to be unacceptable and deeply flawed. Anyone in this community can sell their free market home and perhaps make a profit and move into deed restricted housing. There's a county commissioner and multiple homeowners in Aldisoro who have done this. I don't know their stories. Perhaps they were upside down on their mortgages. Perhaps they saw a route and opportunity to create some generational wealth and buy into deed restriction. I do know all of these people have lived, worked and contributed to the community in the thirty-five years I have been here. It's not for me to judge or reinterpret the LUC and I do not feel it is the county's job to do so. Why shouldn't every deed restricted owner, platted in the original land use code, be able to have that same opportunity? It says in the intent exactly that. So last time we said we could go over the three minutes, so we didn't have to go back and forth and back and forth.
You missed the beginning where we decided we were gonna stick to three minutes this time, but we will have an opportunity for a second round of comments. If I let you go as long as you'd like, then I need to let everybody go as long as you, as they'd like, and that is not a, a prudent public process, so.
Well, I'd like to make a request because everyone here are the only ones who are speaking and were working and I don't, I can't really stay and come and make a comment to have thirty more seconds.
You can have thirty more seconds in the second round of comments, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. I mean-
I'll have three more.
You'll have three minutes. Yeah, exactly. Okay, anybody else care to speak, um, before we, um, go on to responding as we say? Okay, I just wanna say for the record that Jimmy Gordon was shaking her head vigorously behind you. She is not a deed restricted property owner. Her interest in, in being involved with the covenant, as I understand it, was as a member of the HOA board at Lawson Hill at the time, so I just wanna clarify that.
Yeah, yeah. You were protecting.
I've never saw her. Yeah, it's, yeah. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing your work. Um, all right, um, I think there are a couple of other things that maybe I and Galena can address and then I'll maybe turn some over to the, um, to the staff. Brett Lee, it's nice to see you. Thank you for being here and, and participating. I know it takes time and it's also a long, complicated process. Um, I just wanna clarify that we are in no way trying to change your deed restriction or the deed restriction that anybody currently holds. Anybody who wants to stay on the deed restriction that they currently have is welcome to do so. We are trying to, um, correct a misunderstanding, um, on behalf of the county from years ago that, um, that people needed to change to a more restrictive deed restriction. And so we are allowing people to actually go back if they choose to a less restrictive deed restriction. So there's no taking here. There's an argument that there was inadvertently a taking in the past. And that's what we're trying to fix here by allowing people to have not more deed re- uh, restrictive deed restrictions, but less deed restricted. So there's nothing, um, going on here that is gonna make your value less, uh, your property less valuable. And for your rights any less liberal than they currently are.
So what you're saying though is people have a choice to have more?
No, no, so people have a choice to have a less restrictive deed restriction.
But not the original.
Yeah.
Please restrict.
Yeah. Okay, let's not have a com- we're not gonna have a community conversation. This is a, this is a Board of County Commissioners public meeting. That's the best I can do to explain it. If anybody up here, the staff or commissioners would like to add to that, please do. And otherwise, Brett Lee, we, let's have you come back again in the second round, okay?
And if I could just clarify, I heard you, um, mention initially, um, that there was a vote to be in the county and it was voted no and questioning if this is a move to the town's deed restrictions.
Are part of it.
Yeah, Lawson, Lawson is under the county's deed restriction, not the county, uh, and it is in the county. Um, we are in no way looking to go to the town of Telluride or Mount Villages deed restrictions. We're talking solely about the, the land use code deed restriction and subsequent covenant deed restrictions. And how certain groups of folks that may be in different, uh, categories would, may have an option to revert to a lesser uh, restrictive deed restriction under the county.
And being that I was in two thousand and five, that you don't even, I'm not even part of this.
Yeah, you are part of it. Yeah, you, you might be, but again, and we can help you understand your specific situation at a later time as opposed to in a public meeting. But you, um, will be offered, if we go ahead with this resolution, to revert back to whatever might have been prior to two thousand and five, but it would only be something that's less restricted and it would be totally your option. So-
And Jared, yeah.
Jared, please.
And, and I was just gonna mention, there was no covenant in two thousand and five. So if she would be on the original land use code, so you were on the OG-
Right.
Land use code.
So this really doesn't apply to you.
And so that, that is, um, I think it's worth saying and, and I think it leads to another point in a question that Shelley had suggested and, and I believe, you know, we're talking about notice letters and what form those notice letters would take. Our concept has been that we, we do have property owners, the deed restriction that they are currently on. Um, and we would convey that using our mail merge. Obviously, we may have some misinformation.
Sure.
And so we would not want anybody to take that as absolute. Um, but it, it is, we have conceptualized it. We have a big mail merge that every owner would have an individualized letter with the offer that exists as we've outlined.
Okay, and Jared, would, we would identify in that letter what their current deed restriction is?
Correct, as we know it.
As we understand it.
But, but not to the detail of what the, what was deed restricted previous to their ownership. That's something they would need.
I, I believe we, I believe we have what, what they're on now and what the previous transaction was.
Okay.
Or what the, what it was prior to the previous transaction. So we would convey both of those as you have the option to stay on what you have now and this is what we understand it to be. You have the option to revert and this is what we understand it to be. Um, or those other scenarios as we outline.
Well, that's incredible and I know a lot of that is due to Nancy Willis's hard work and research over the past year. Yeah, many, many, many months. Um, so that's great that that information could be utilized for public um, benefit. Cause that's a lot of, it's a lot of research to do. Not everyone knows these things about their property.
Exactly. Um, while we're addressing the notice letters, did you want to say something?
Go, no, go, go ahead.
Um, I, I actually, I also agree with Shelley that I'd like to give a ninety day response. Um, you know, these are people who are not, you know, in the business and have not been necessarily here at every meeting and need some time to get their heads around what the options are. Maybe hire a lawyer, um, do some research. So I would like to, um, to give them a ninety day response time. Galena, how do you feel?
I was about to say the exact same thing. Um, yeah, I think it's only fair and people are busy working running their lives and it does kinda overlap with off-season and I think honoring another thirty days is very reasonable. And if the compliance gets pushed into the new year, so be it.
I, I- And that'll give us plenty of time to make sure we like the new compliance process and policies and all that kind of, yeah, so it works for both sides. Um, I wanted to respond to, and Jared, please follow up if I get this wrong, Lee's question about what we meant by a workaround. And my interpretation of that was that we do believe, our lawyer believes and we believe that we cannot change any kind of an original plat or something that's on the, on the plat. Um, and so the workaround is that we could add this additional, um, document that those who want to go back to the land use code, um, would sign in addition, uh, and that would be recorded with their property. Um, so we do agree that we can't change the plat and that would not be changed. Does that get that right, Jared?
I, I believe and I would defer to Maura, um, as she's been doing a lot of that research, so.
Maura, did you wanna respond to that?
Yeah, so the, the additions to the land use code, um, in terms of those definitions would be spelled out in an agreement to reinstate the land use code deed restriction. So this would effectively be where the land use code says cannot be amended without owner consent. This would be the owner consenting to these changes that would apply to their land use code deed restriction.
Okay, I, that's clear to me. Okay. Um, let's see.
So Matthew Leggo's, um, point about the definition of employee between um, the purchase definition of, and the continuing to own property definition, Maura, can you?
Yeah. So-
Make that one.
And I will just say upfront that this is an imperfect solution. Because we're trying to blend concepts from the covenant into the land use code. Uh, so I had to take what we have and make it try to work the best we could with the, the structure of the land use code. So the land use code does not distinguish between a purchasing employee and a continuing employee. There's only one definition of employee. So that's a difference in the covenant. So that was a one, one of the challenges in carrying over the definitions from the covenant. However, the way that it's written in the resolution, it I think makes it clear that the non-qualifying versus qualifying income threshold only applies for that initial qualifying period. Um, but this, again, this is one of the difficulties of trying to meld these two different types of deed restrictions because under the covenant, there's a whole separate set of definitions for how you apply and qualify. And then there's definitions for how you continue to qualify. But under the land use code, there's just owners, which includes employees, and there's one definition for that. We could certainly go back and look at this, uh, and see if there's a way to make it more workable, but the if we were to simply use the continuing employee definition from the covenant, that would not incorporate the household qualifying versus non-qualifying income standard. And my understanding from our last conversation was that that was something that we wanted to see, um, put in place here if we were going to consider putting people outside the three-year period back on the land use code.
I think you interpreted that correctly in terms of board direction. Now, anything else you want?
Uh, no, that's, that is helpful. Hopefully that is helpful to the public and Mr. Leggo who asked the question. Yeah. I don't really have any more at this point.
Jake, you brought up a number of things that, um, I didn't catch all of them because I wasn't sure if you were looking at the covenant or at the resolution, but there was one that I know was in the covenant where you asked that in section four, where we have- Where you asked that in section four, where we have um language about something being an enforceable action um against the property owner, that there be a s- uh a compensatory one for the, for the county. I think what you're suggesting there is that we would actually revise the covenant and I, and I don't think that that is part of this conversation. I think that we can continue to refine the covenant as we have since twenty ten all the way till twenty thirteen, but that is not something that I'm prepared to do today. So um, the offer or the suggested offer is the twenty sixteen covenant as is. Since this conversation began, we have put in place um protocols for making a complaint against the county. Um, and, and taking them to the San, I'm sorry, uh against the San Miguel Regional Housing Authority and so forth with layers of of appeal. Um, and I think for now that's gonna have to do. I imagine that there's still a layer of appeal that would be a legal move. Um, so in that respect, a, a property owner is covered. Maura, you are the lawyer. Would you like to respond a little more clearly or differently to that?
Um, no, and I mean, I agree with your, the response that we're not looking to amend the covenant at this point. Um, and that as we continue to look at the SMRHA procedures, that's something we can keep in mind.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll also say that through our review of the compliance um procedures, that that could be an opportunity in time to think about the enforcement process in a reciprocal way, making sure that that complaint process is sufficient enough to give homeowners an opportunity to report on something that they felt wasn't right.
Um, great. So those of you who are gonna start work on the policy and compliance review, please take note. Then we'll remember that as well.
Yeah.
Um, was there anything else that anybody wanted to address before we take a second round of comments?
I'll respond to what I think were two other points that Jake McTeague made. Um. So one, as I understood, it was a refer- the reference in the whereas clauses to section eleven. Um, and that he didn't see that in the covenant, so I, if that's, if that's accurate representation of the question, so that's referencing the twenty ten covenant and that section eleven was in the twenty ten covenant in, is not in the twenty sixteen covenant. So that's why you wouldn't see it in the exhibit A covenant that's attached to this resolution.
And that was regarding a price cap and all of that stuff, right?
Yep, it was titled Rights Concerning Exercise of Option to Purchase.
Okay, that makes sense. And so the current eleven is, is, is a different eleven.
Is the definitions section.
Thank you. Anything else, Maura?
Um, and then just a comment about for the, the people that had purchased between twenty ten and twenty sixteen and how is this option any different? Um. It's true, we are incorporating definitions from the covenant to apply to those people that may wanna revert to the land use code, so it is not a complete reversion. Uh, but those are the only changes that are being incorporated from the covenant. And if someone would prefer the benefits of the clarity provided by the covenant, then they'll also have that option.
Right, and I think that the reason that this option is being considered of the land use code with this additional sort of addendum of the definitions is because the B O C C and the staff are trying to kind of find a appropriate middle ground that protects both the individual property owners as well as the county as a whole. And that would include um people who are not necessarily living in deed restricted properties, but have very much an interest in this, this system continuing to work. Um, the other reason that um we are, we are kind of approaching this potential option is because as we've discussed many times, it feels like it captures the actual intention of the original land use code and thank you to the staff for going back and interviewing all of these attorneys and planning directors who, for many of them, who've been involved since the early uh nineteen hundred, nineteen nineties to understand what that intention really was. And I think it's captured very well in the purpose, which we have repeatedly uh reviewed here. Um, and the way I feel right now, and I'm looking forward to another round of comments, is that I'm unwilling to step away from the purpose of the land use code and I'm unwilling to um, to kind of what I call kind of gut the deed restriction on um a number of these properties in order to benefit um financially, people who are asking for that option at the expense of the rest of the community. So that's kind of where I'm sitting right now and, and appreciate this, this suggestion from the public that the staff has now kind of brought to light to life. Um. Galena, did you wanna say anything else before we go into public comment again?
Um, you know, I, I'll just say that I have had hearing that original intent of, of the deed restriction from straight from the mouth of some of those folks who crafted this really did give me some clarity on the original intent and you know, I think a lot of people in this room um have been through this process over the last couple of years, really, and it's been, and a very educational experience for the whole community. Um, and understanding the, how the, how the deed restrictions have evolved over time and why and the missteps that were admittedly taken through some of that, that time is i- is what we're trying to, to remedy here, you know, but going back to that original intent of deed restricted properties and what the benefit is from that intent to the community is really been my kind of north star in this. Um, because it's, we're, we're looking down uh incredible deed restricted home deficit um that has accrued over decades and the need is dire and I'm not only thinking about this moment in time, but the future and future buyers and the viability of our working class community. And so that is why I've been coming back to this original intent and how it applies to this current moment in time. And I'm really looking forward to the next round of public comment to kind of extr- extrapolate on people's thoughts and go from there.
Yeah, uh, one other point I think we haven't covered in here, and I think it was brought up in a written public comment that the county has not um provided any financial resources for any of the properties under consideration. So that would be San Bernardo, Alisoro, Lawson Hill. And in fact, in kind of going back and trying to learn more about the history of all of this, we discovered that the county had in fact invested over a million dollars in the Lawson Hill project. Mike, do you wanna um share a little more about that?
Sure. So part of that was a four hundred thousand dollar donation from Iderato during the movement of the trailers from the Pandora area to Lawson. And then um the county had guaranteed, was acting as the developer in Lawson and was selling uh homes um for guaranteed maximum prices. And that have the, they had been under contract with several uh numerous properties. Um, the county was sued by a group of local folks. By the time they were able to settle that lawsuit and get under construction, there were significant overruns in cost from the contractors. So the county was selling units at a, at a level that was far less than what we were spending to build them. And that amount uh was approximately seven hundred seventy thousand dollars is what I've learned through my research and through talking to the actual project developers and the, the people that were um selling these units on behalf of the county. So the county did put in um at that time, nineteen ninety, ninety-one, a fairly significant financial subsidy along with Iderato.
To Lawson. Okay. Great. I think we're ready for round two of public comment. Um, begin with whoever is in the room and would like to speak. Lee.
Lee Ruffa, uh owner up in Alisoro. I guess I'll take a step back here. Yeah, I keep hearing today we're trying to do what's right for the county. And it seems like the Board of County Commissioners, Michael and Jared Erlos has gotten a um a conscience. I spent two years fighting with the Regional Housing Authority, how they trampled over my rights and all my stuff. I reached out to Michael. He went dark. Lance actually listened to me. Um, tons of paperwork back and forth. And then, and then after two years or a year and a half, we finally got settled out and stuff like this and I kinda went quiet. And now I see you guys are trying to change the land use code. And now we have a conscience. I asked for two years for a conscience. I reached out to you and spoke with you. You just looked at me like, okay, talk to Michael. When they talked to him personally, he would never entertain me. He would never even talk to me face to face. And I find it strange that we're worried about affordability. Second thing, our homes are not affordable. You guys haven't figured this out yet. Two Rivers is the only place that's affordable. Ninety-nine percent of the stuff out there that's currently platted, that's out there, is most of the time people are purchasing or self-employed. Or they have too good incomes. So we're trying to say something that's already, that cat is out of the bag. And I get it going forward, we're gonna be changing the land use code to accommodate those new things, or if they're even will be in land use code. But I still go back to the simple thing. You need to do what's right to those people that you guys, and I say figuratively, you guys when ripshot over people. Courtney and Lois were horrible people. And you guys tolerated it. And, and now here we are at the eve of trying to make some big decisions that are gonna affect people going forward, and you have a conscience. And you say, we need to save our housing. We need to add addendums to the land use code because we're big brother and we can ask you to do this and you will amend your your thing because the owner said you can do that by the plat. I find that wrong. That is so wrong. There's, there's nothing in, and I've been here for this whole process because I keep seeing wrongs being done by the county. I started having this thing, what are we, three and a half years now? Three years? That's not about right, people? I fought the county for a year and a half, two years about my affordable housing, and now we're doing this for another two years. And I'm gonna stay here to the very end because I don't like the way you guys are treating it. I agree with Shelley. You guys are close. But when it comes to the land use code, your attorney's already said, can't change it. Now you wanna change it and add an addendum. That's not giving people a choice. Choice has been taken away. I just understand why you have a conscience now. And when I asked for some help, I never got that courtesy.
Lee, anybody online? I, I just would like to caution us against quoting other people because I had a note that Shelley said she supports the current resolution. Is that how?
On the resolution up until the land use code.
Okay.
That I agree with. She is correct one hundred percent. You guys have come a long way on the covenant. I'm still going back to the original land use code.
Okay, so Shelley has said, made the statement that she's comfortable with the current resolution. It sounds like you're in a different place. Okay, thank you just for clarifying that.
No problem.
Would anyone else in the room like to speak? There's a, oh, somebody online. Oh, my gosh. Matthew, hi.
Hi, so um in regards to what she was stating about with the land use code language and whatnot, um, if that's not a solvable problem, honestly, what you guys are offering to people is basically to go to the twenty twenty-three covenant in many, many ways. Um, not even even more restrictive in a lot of ways than the twenty-ten covenant. So, I mean, if that's not a solvable problem by your guys attorneys, that might not be a realistic option to consider, is just my thought process. Cause if we're giving people a more restrictive covenant, why are we here? Um, what, what's the point at that point? Just my two cents.
Can I ask a question of?
Yes.
Go. Um, Mr. Legault, e- with all due respect, I, as I recall in previous meetings, y- you made this suggestion.
Yes. And I, I think that we should try to find a way to split it. I completely understand the difficulties in trying to merge documents together. There might not be a functional way to do it, or it might require a whole to be entirely frank, like new covenant rather than the land use code that incorporates the rights of the land use code. There might, that, that might need to be a larger process than just a simple definition. It is possible to get everybody to agree to that, but it sounds like that might not be possible when you actually dig into the nitty gritty of the land use code. And I can completely understand the attorney's problems with merging documents. I do not envy her position. So there, there might need to be, it might need to be larger than just a simple definition, I guess, what I'm getting at, if you're going to try going down that road.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? Mara.
I have a couple of questions I'd like responses to. Ann, did you benefit from deed restriction when you sold your free market property? As you're inferring that I will benefit from deed restricted if I sell my property? Can the commissioners and staff share with us why there has been so much work over the years to erode property rights of deed restricted owners? Is there really a problem? How many of those hundred-plus homes like Lee, myself and Brett Lee have been sold to remote workers? We had the biggest remote worker time during COVID. And it continued and now it's, it's dying out. And um, so I would like to have those numbers. Do you guys, does the staff have those numbers of those homes that have changed hands and these thirty-five-year-plus residents had this great benefit? Um, Mike Berdonia, did you respond to Lee when he reached out to you over the last two years?
Yes, I did. Yeah, actually. No, I have.
I need my twenty seconds back, by the way.
Let's stick with.
Yeah.
Here.
Um. So, I mean, the words like benefit and, and continually the original intent, there's so many nuances. And the intent here says, while allowing customary free market unrestricted practices to influence sale and rental of affordable housing as much as possible. I feel like you're taking that away. You only talk about preserving the, the homes, and that hasn't been a problem. They're preserved. They have, there hasn't been an influx. They haven't gone crazy. I know in Mountain Village, a preschool director, someone who worked here, who raised their kids here, were able to make a little bit of money selling their deed restricted property, as they should. They're not making the fifteen million, the ten million, the five million of free market. They're making, and I will make, what the market will bear. And I'll tell you, whatever that is, isn't gonna make up for having to live here and work multiple jobs. You know multiple people like us, Galena, and you know.
I'm one of.
And so I want you to look at the intent is not just one part. The intent is that people like us, like Brett Lee, might have some money when she finally moves, or that her son could buy her house and stay here. And that's really what's happening with the deed restrictions. Families are coming back. And that, it's, it's not a problem and we're wasting more and more time. It's really not a problem.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else online? Okay, anybody else in the room? Jimmy, I can tell you have one more thing to say. Come on up to the microphone, please.
I just think there's a lot of confusion um as to what you guys are actually trying to do. I think you're trying to correct previous mistakes by giving people some rights of reversion to things that are less restrictive. And it seems like there is a lot of upset in the room um that you're doing something to take more away. And I don't see it that way. Uh, I think this whole land use code thing, either let people go back on the LUC or don't. I, I, I think that's just the muddy in the water is to create new definitions, but that's just my opinion. Uh, you guys are doing a good thing and trying to correct prior mistakes. And there are a lot of people that are very emotional about what they had to deal with in that time period. But right now, I think you're doing the best you can to give some reversion options. And I su- I support that. So um, I think the ninety days, you can see from some of the conversations, the level of confusion that people already have. And they're distrustful of government. They feel that whatever this must be, there must be some gotcha in it. It's going to be worse for them rather than better. But for them to go through and look at their current deed restriction, whatever that be, covenant or LUC. And the work to do this, to tell each person what they're on, and even include that document, and then include the twenty sixteen covenant as an option, or even the land use code with whatever restrictions you might want to put on as an option. with whatever restrictions you might want to put on as an option. If you had to do that for all of these people, the amount of work that that's gonna take. But that's what everybody needs, and even at that level, they're not gonna understand what they're looking at. They're not gonna unless they go through like some of us do and go line by line and we see what it is. This is, this is a mess that is not of your creation. It's a mess that's been allowed to go on, and there has been administrative failures, I think market administrative failures. I'm really glad that you guys wanna stay part of that, that procedural process. But there's just a lot of confusion. I think you're doing, I think you're trying to do the right thing. And, and I'm not a hundred percent on board with the solution, but you're trying to make a compromise. And so I just hope everybody can try to get a better handle on what it is that you are doing and what's gonna be offered to them.
Thanks. Thank you, Jenny. Anybody else? Big?
Hi, Jake McTeague, El De Soro. I'm, I don't feel as though that my question was answered, that if one purchased from two thousand ten and they were on the two thousand ten covenant at that time, or amendment, from that period of time to two thousand sixteen to the second amendment was made, and then with the option that's presented, how is it any different? I don't, I really don't, I just wanna know what the difference is.
Go on, I'm just gonna ask Maura to answer that. So then, if you have a follow-up, we can resolve this.
Wonderful.
Maura, do you feel like you understand the question?
So the question is.
Oh, sorry, you wanna restate it, Maura?
I'm gonna try and restate it and make sure I have it correct. For people who purchase between twenty-ten and twenty-sixteen that are being offered the option to revert to this land use code, but with these additional definitions, what is the difference between that and the covenant?
Twenty-ten covenant. The twenty-ten covenant.
I mean, there's certainly a lot more definitions and rules in the covenant that we're not incorporating back into the land use code. But when it comes to the core, like what it takes to qualify as an employee, I would say, yes, we're incorporating that language from the covenant uh, into these people that would go back to the land use code. So on that, on that point, it is very similar to the covenant, but there is a lot of other differences between the covenant and the land use code, the nineteen-nineties land use code that we would not be incorporating. Whether those are for the better or the worse, I think is up for debate. Certainly, the covenant provides a lot more clarity on how it's going to be administered and the procedures than the land use code does. But we've heard that people want the land use code, not the covenant.
Thank you.
Correct. So my fun, on that, it, the core principles of the two thousand ten covenant are in the LUC option that is being presented. So it's really not that different. It was mentioned by someone else that the LUC option that's being presented for today is, I think it is disingenuous. It, it really does not make a change at all. And again, you know, Commissioner Brown, you mentioned that if people are just going to the LUC, you said that this is just a financial benefit. I think that's the wrong perception. The perception here is a principle one that people were misled. And the original, it says, you know, in the covenant or in the original amendment that I have from two thousand ten, you know, it clearly states what the intent was of the two thousand ten. It was to clarify the provisions of the LUC. Whereas then we, when we move to two thousand sixteen, you move from clarifying the intention to preservation. And when you move to that preservation, then in two thousand sixteen, twenty-one and twenty-three, it was very much of an engineering, intentional engineering in taking of property rights. That's the true argument here, is it's not a financial windfall. It is the principle that was intentionally ignored and engineered by previous administration. And so to say that a misunderstanding by the county in the past, yes, it was a misunderstanding by the B O C C, but not by the administration that you appointed. Final question, how many owners had the right to be on the LUC, the original LUC, that were not allowed to? So such as myself, I had to sign the two thousand ten. How many owners out there have the right, or could have had the right to go to the LUC when they purchased their property? Thank you.
Okay. Anything you know you'd like to respond to right now? Yeah, I I think we all agree that by requiring people, new buyers, to move to a more restricted cover covenant, there was an erosion of property rights. I think we all agree on that. And why that was done, or why it wasn't done, we weren't here. We don't know. I can only imagine it was because the people who had that, that job felt that it was the right thing to do, to, to maintain the deed restriction and, and the affordable housing property. I will say, though, that the whole reason we're here is because we are addressing that erosion of property rights, and we are providing the opportunity to go back to what should have been. And I think some of us in this room have a disagreement about what should have been. And my, my interpretation is that the land use code with the additional language is what should have been. And I know that's why the twenty-ten covenant was, was, was built and, and, and offered and developed. And so it's, I understand this isn't perfect, but I also will say that I'm not comfortable as a commissioner just going back to that land use code, which I believe was not well-witted. And we're just opening up Pandora's Box for a hundred and ten more units, or whatever it might be. And by adding this rider, I'll call it, we are clarifying what the deed restriction was meant to be. It's not perfect, but it is our way of responding to people who asked to go back to the land use code. And that is, I think, the best we've come up with, and after hours and months and now years, as Lee said, of this conversation. Lara, I don't have all of the data that you're asking for, so I can't respond to all of that. But I will respond to your question about whether I benefited when I purchased a deed restricted property, and I've made that statement. I've purchased two deed restricted properties. I've absolutely benefited. It was allowed me to stay here when I first moved here after a few years, and allowed me to stay here six years ago when I bought that property, because I couldn't afford to keep up my house that I owned. And so I've absolutely benefited. And I would like all of us here to benefit from the deed restriction and the affordable market property. So I'm, I don't know if this is a rhetorical question, but the answer is yes. And, and I hope that all of us who continue to live in deed restricted properties, and, and those who will live in the ones to be built will benefit as well as the broader community, because we are here. And that's my response. Mike, do you wanna respond about, um, the question about whether you spoke, engaged with Lee Ruffa?
Yeah, and I have, I was just looking back through some of my emails. I didn't count, but I have extensive back and forth with Lee. I did speak with Lee. We created a grievance process at Lee's request. I couldn't attend that time because I had COVID on that day. So Scott Robson, who was my other counterpart overseeing Courtney, attended that session with Lee. And I'll just stop there.
I just wanna note that Annalise has her hand up online, and
Missed you.
I, we didn't formally close public comment, so I, I think the chair would be open to taking her comment.
Thank you. Yes, I would, of course. Hi, Annalise, and thank you also for your letter of August eleventh.
Uh, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I, and I'm, almost everything is in the letter, so I don't need to add to that. The only thing I wanted to say is that when you said opening Pandora's Box, I think the few properties that this affects where you are definitely opening Pandora's Box and taking away people's property rights is not worth it. I really think that the commissioner should be focused on creating new affordable housing with your new rules and leaving a- and not affecting people's private property rights. But I know you guys are trying to do the best you can. So thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Annalise, and so much for all of your input over this process. Okay, we're gonna close. Oh, Brettley, yes, of course.
Um, I'm obvious, this is my first meeting and not as informed as everyone, oh, Brettley Danner, not as informed as everybody else. But if this is giving people more rights, why are so many people upset?
I think I'll ask you to have that conversation outside the, the room with the people who are upset. Okay. Um, any more questions or discussion? Annalise, I think you need to mute yourself.
Do you wanna close? Last public comment, room close.
I think we're done with public comment. Thank you. We have our three o'clock deadline, and we need to talk through some of this.
Can staff answer my question? I know you didn't have the information, but does staff, you're making this decision, does staff, does anyone know how many homes have been a problem and sold, and there's this influx and loss of this coveted deed restrict-
We, we understand your question. Thank you, Lara. Um, staff, I have closed public comment. If you'd like to respond, you may. If you don't want to, you don't have to.
It was from my first public comment.
I understand. I know we aren't, we aren't able to address every, every comment and so.
I would only say that up until the outside legal review that we had a year ago, it has always been, um, during the six years during the prior fifteen before that, it was always the interpretation that they earned income and that the definition of employee is how is different. So to, um, there's a question about, did all these homes sell to these location neutral workers during COVID? The answer was no, because they weren't qualified, able to qualify um, by having one person in their home who might have fit that employee definition standard as now we're interpreting the land use code intended. At that time, it was intended that the entirety of the household's income, fifty-one, over fifty percent had to have been earned within the R one area. So that's why they didn't transfer. That's, I think, the concern now is if we go to this new interpretation, that we could have folks that have vast sums of wealth, and once they understand that they only have to meet the employment standard of one individual in the household, they could say, okay, my spouse or somebody's going to work a part-time job, so we can qualify to buy this deed restricted home, regardless of the fact that we have greater means to purchase other homes.
Thank you. Yes, I do think that a lot, some of this is anticipating the future based on the current circumstances and expecting those to, to increase. Um, I have a couple of comments, just tiny things here about on the resolution. I think as Commissioner Gleason was reading through section two C one, there was an is that should be an if. This is the definition of a retiree essentially. Maybe qualified as an employee by the housing authority or its designee if that person is more than sixty years of age. So we'll just clean that up. And then, um, I believe we need to also take out commissioner wearing as being excluded from the offer. Is that right? Yeah. He did not make that statement today, so he would be eligible for the offer. And there's some pronouns and things and plurals that need to change in that section as well. Anything else from you, Delina?
Um, no, no, thank you for catching that. I kind of stumbled over that word and, and corrected it as I was speaking, just to make it, make, so it made sense to the listeners. But yeah, that would need to be addressed to read correctly.
Okay.
I, I guess, coming back to that definition of employee and response um, that Maura Fahy gave about kind of fine tuning that and where this resolution landed today with that definition of employee. Um, I, I mean, do, how do you feel about the way it's defined currently in this resolution as presented?
I think it's appropriate, and I think, um, it's actually super clear, and I'm comfortable with it.
Commissioners, could I speak to that?
Yeah, thank you.
I do, so looking at it, again, I do think there is some merit to the point that it creates some confusion about, does the qualifying income threshold apply only at initial purchase or as a continuing standard? Which, to remind you, the early versions of the covenant prior to twenty-twenty-three did not impose that as a continuing standard. It only imposes it at the time of purchase. And I think, reading it again, while our intention is that it only be applied at time of purchase, future versions of us could read it to apply as a continuing standard, and I don't want us to be going down a path of creating more confusion in this process. So I would like to look at refining that definition if you are poised to move forward with this approach uh, to, to better refine that definition to clearly achieve the intention that is the qualifying income threshold applies at the time of purchase and not as an every single year of ownership qualification.
Okay. That's fine. Is that something you can do now, Maura, or do we need to continue this discussion?
I can maybe do it now, if I take a minute to look at the language.
I mean, I don't, yeah, Jared, you have a-
I mean, I, I think it's, it's, it's something that is significant enough that I, I would maybe advocate it, being able to sleep on it. Because we know being hasty is not necessarily getting us a lot in this, you know, as, as much as I would like to get ahead of some closures and other things that are happening, you know, I don't know that it is worth kind of trying to close the book and having some sort of minor mistake or misconstrued issue. You know, as, as much as I would like this to be our last meeting to discuss this, uh, it will not be, and I, I would suggest, you know, we take the time that we.
I support that. It's, in my mind, pretty substantial and will affect owners and future owners and potentially, and interpretation of this is really important. And I, our whole purpose here is to move forward with clarity, and this needs to be clear.
Yeah, I just surmise that if somebody does take this option as, you know, they read it, they don't mind it, they wanna go back to the land use code, you know, and they, they come back to this kind of issue that, you know, we don't, we wanna make it as clear. We don't want to have to replay this tape.
I think we're all in agreement, and I do, I'm sensitive to the, um, three o'clock deadline. So I think what we're hearing is that we will continue this.
I also just wanna weigh in and say I just bought myself ten minutes.
Sorry.
But Mike still has a meeting and so.
I both have meetings at three, and I still think that, um, it's not something we wanna do on the fly, but thank you for that. So, let's.
Do you wanna try and come back next week around September third?
Um, I would like to come back. Oops, I'm seeing the third. Oh, Maura's not here next week. Yeah.
True, thanks.
Let's wait until September third. Okay, and just to clarify, Maura, you asked if we are comfortable moving forward with the sort of premise of this with just the few adjustments we've discussed, and my answer is yes.
My answer is yes as well. Um, and I, I know we're being, in the name of time, I'll be very brief here, but there, these decisions are really hard, and the voices in this room are really important, and I have heard them very thoroughly and given a lot of thought. I've also heard from a lot of members of the community who have real concerns about some of the, the concerns the board has brought up about the, moving forward and looking into the future and. the moving forward and looking into the future and you know, teachers looking for housing, essential workers needing to stay in this community, people's kids maybe having the opportunity to buy into a home here. Uh, all of that is something that I am really taking into consideration wi- with this, these hard and I believe thoughtful decisions. So I just feel inclined to state that this is based on a lot of feedback from the enti- entirety of the community. Um. And for those whose voices are not in this room, I'm also taking those into consideration here.
Thank you, Lena.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, okay, I think we are ready to adjourn the meeting. Oh, sorry, Maura, we had considered fourteen A. We don't have time to talk that through today, so we are going to ship that to the nine of September, or the third of September as well.
Okay.
All right, and we may not see you in a meeting again for then, so send our very best wishes.
Thank you.
Yeah, have a great time.
Yeah. We'll be thinking of you.
Thanks.
All right, I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second, how do you vote?
I.
I as well. The meeting is, thank you very much.